Right, colleagues, we're running a little late. I'm going to suggest we get started in just a very short time. Thank you. Colleagues, thank you for being here this morning. Welcome to today's committee meeting on security and defence. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. So I will take it as there are no indications of opposition. The agenda is adopted as you have it in front of you. According to the linguistic profile of the subcommittee, then we don't have Bulgarian, Danish, Estonian, Finnish, Hungarian, Irish, Latvian, Lithuanian, Maltese, Portuguese, Romanian, Slovak or Slovenian in the room this morning. But I hope we have your languages. The Sede meeting tomorrow morning, on Thursday morning, will unusually start at 10:00 a.m. rather than 9:00 a.m. So although I'm sure it would be delightful to see you here at 9:00, there won't be anything to discuss until 10:00. So on to the first substantive point of the agenda, which is our public hearing on artificial intelligence and its future impact on security. We have an exchange of views this morning, which I am very much looking forward to, and I'm sure other colleagues are as well. With four guests who have joined us, we have Mr Tim Schreis, forgive the pronunciation, Director of Research at the Hague Centre of Strategic Studies. This is Wendy Anderson, who is the Adjunct Senior Fellow Centre for New American Security. Mr Alan Defoe, who is Director, Governance of AI Programme, Future of Humanity Institute at the University of Oxford. And Mr Marcel Dicau, who is Head of International Security Research Division, German Institute for International and Security Affairs. Thank you all very much for joining us this morning. The hearing is intended to get the committee started on the topic of artificial intelligence and its intersection with defence. We have already talked extensively about the questions of autonomous weapons and drones, but the topic is, of course, much wider than this, and we hope to tackle some of this today. The full potential of AI is still waiting to be unleashed, but in many applications it has already made substantial inroads into consumer markets. While the self-driving car is still a few years away, in areas such as image and sound processing, data analytics and other areas, huge steps have been made that point towards truly innovative applications in the future. One area in which these developments will be felt is, of course, defence. Autonomous operations are one salient area, but there are likely to be much broader applications in fields as diverse as reconnaissance, communications, logistics and planning, and maybe the broader development of military strategy in the longer term. I am therefore very grateful to have such an esteemed panel of experts here today to discuss these issues with us. We have split the discussion into two panels. The first panel will give a broad overview of what we can expect the impact of AI to be in the defence field. I invite our experts to look far ahead and even speculate, as we really need to start thinking hard about the long-term implications of this technology. The second panel will go a bit more into the nitty-gritty of what we should concretely do with regard to the challenges, and particularly the regulatory challenges that AI poses. Of course, many of these regulatory questions are universal and are also applicable to civilian AI as well. The presentations will therefore range quite widely. However, there are specific concerns with regard to AI in the military that I would expect this committee to be addressing, and I am genuinely, as I have said, looking forward to the discussions this morning. Without further ado, I would like now to pass the floor to Mr Tim Schreis, who is the first speaker of our panel. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Dear members of the Committee on Security and Defence, thank you for hosting a discussion on a topic that is so tremendously important to global security, but also to European security and the security of European citizens. And thank you for inviting me to share my thoughts with you. The past few years has been rapid progress in various fields that are generally identified under the header of AI, artificial intelligence. That progress has largely taken off because of advances in deep learning based on neural network pattern recognition. And these advances have been driven by a combination of massive investment from predominantly private actors, persistent increase in computing power and the increasing availability of large data sets. AI, as the chairwoman pointed out, is predicted to radically disrupt and transform industries from labour markets and societies. And examples that we already see today include the automotive industry, self-driving cars, they're not there yet, but they are around the corner, health sciences, think of advanced melanoma screening and detection, financial trading, algorithmic asset management, over 40% of financial trading is done by algorithms these days, but also advertising in terms of behavioural targeting, of which there has been a lot to do about over these past few years, of course. But AI is also expected to have a profound impact on the character and perhaps even the nature of future conflict. Leading military powers such as the US, China and Russia are currently investing heavily in AI-related defence R&amp;D, and they do that to increase their military capabilities. The goal of these investments is to improve the effectiveness and efficiency of current generation military capabilities. But at the same time, they are also intended to bring about disruptive change, so that these powers have a competitive military edge. So the security impact of AI is an issue of grave concern that is fundamental to future international peace and security. Today I will start off with a few introductory remarks on what AI is and what AI is not to clarify any potential misconceptions that may exist. I will also offer you a framework to think about AI and its future development, and I will identify five important issues to consider, the implication of AI in the context of security and defence. And I will then briefly turn to US, Chinese and Russian efforts in this area and touch on some AI security and defence application that defence organisations are currently working on. And I will conclude with a brief assessment of the potential positive and the potential negative implications associated with AI. So we may be currently still on the ascending slope of the AI hype cycle, but the fact that there is so much to do about AI is definitely not without reason. Just to give you a few examples related to recent progress in order to make this a little bit more concrete, in the past three years alone, AI systems have proven that they can not only meet but also exceed human performance in image recognition, speech transcription and direct translation. AI systems have learned how to drive, identify relevant information in a paragraph to answer questions, recognise human faces even if these faces are blurred, they can also detect human emotions, they have created their own encryption schemes and detect malware, they can diagnose crop diseases, they can write cookbook recipes, sports articles, movie screenplays, music and poetry. And AI systems have also beaten world champions at strategic games such as chess, poker and Go. These are all activities that we humans, we homo sapiens sapiens, or wise men and wise women, associate with intelligence, and intelligence we associate with us humans. This is why we're now attaching the label artificial to this newly emerging form of intelligence. So if we want to have a fruitful discussion on what AI means for security and defence, we first have to define AI and describe what we mean by it. So please bear with me while I go over some of these definitional issues, because I think they're very important. First, what is intelligence? Intelligence has been very usefully defined by Stanford University's formal reasoning group as the computational part of the ability to achieve goals in the world. This definition of intelligence both refers to internal processes, computation, that act in the service of bringing about external results in a complex and dynamic environment in the world. And this definition, as you can see, can be applied both to human and to artificial intelligence. And yes, if we turn to artificial intelligence, prevailing definitions typically denote a wide range of capabilities typically covered by human intelligence too. It's about computation that make it possible to perceive reason and act. And in a defence context, the US Defence Science Board simply states that AI is the capability of computer systems to perform tasks that normally require human intelligence, such as perception, conversation and decision-making. So together, these provide the relevant building blocks of a definition of AI. A lot of the progress in recent years in AI comes from new approaches to machine learning, helping an AI system learn to identify deep hidden patterns in existing data sets. Machine learning in turn makes use of a large and growing number of algorithms, which are employed by different approaches to machine learning.
You slow down a little.
I will. Slow down. We do not need to go into all these algorithms here, as long as it's clear that AI is not one abstract entity or a supercomputer or one killer app, let alone a sentient being, but that AI is rather manifested in a wide range of applications that each can serve different functions. So there's one additional distinction that is particularly useful when thinking about AI and future progress in AI, and that is a distinction between artificial narrow intelligence, artificial general intelligence and artificial superintelligence. Artificial narrow intelligence, or ANI, narrow AI, refers to machine intelligence that equals or exceeds human intelligence for a specific task. Existing examples would be IBM's Deep Blue in chess, or Watson, or Google's AlphaGo, but also high-frequency trading algorithms. And indeed, specialised automatic systems forming beyond human reach, think of Google Translate, for instance, spam filters, but also the guidance systems of point defence anti-missile systems. Then there is artificial general intelligence, which can be defined as machine intelligence meeting the full range of human performance across a wide range of tasks, so not in one domain but across multiple domains. And then there is ASI, artificial superintelligence, and that is machine intelligence that exceeds human intelligence across every task. So in order to sort of frame the discussion, it's good to know that we're currently mostly at artificial narrow intelligence applications. With ANI, applications starting to overtake human performance but only in narrow domains. But we're far from a situation in which there is artificial general intelligence, let alone artificial superintelligence. Naturally, a critical question here concerns future progress in AI. When will AGI or ASI come about? Now, expert opinion is very much divided on this. Still, a majority of experts expect that AGI, the general intelligence, is not likely to arrive at the scene in the next two decades. Having said that, please also note that there are experts that expect this to be much sooner. Ray Kurzweil, for instance, Google's Director of Engineering, has recently moved up his own prediction of when the singularity will take place and when a machine will emerge, to 2029. But even absent a breakthrough from ANI applications to AGI applications, there is a lot of low-hanging fruit out there in the form of algorithms that have yet to be integrated in existing processes, both in the civilian and in the military arena. And many analysts, myself included, expect progress in AI to continue precisely because of the enormous amounts of financial and intellectual investment by these large private actors, and that starts to be complemented now by public actors too, in considerable breakthroughs in hardware and ever bigger data that become available. Now, there are five key points I'd like you to take away from this that are relevant to understand and talk about AI in a security and defence context. First, similar to human intelligence, artificial intelligence is not one thing, it's not one entity, it's not one specific capability. Instead, AI is an enabler. AI can encompass a wide variety of functions in a variety of applications that involve image and sound recognition, knowledge representation, deduction, reasoning and problem solving and planning, and when coupled with physical objects that can also be related to execution. Second, these applications can be put to work for good and for bad in the context of defence and security. AI applications, for instance, can help create better early warning models for the onset of violent conflict, and that can help decision-makers move from early warning to early action and prevention. AI applications can help identify and de-radicalise persons with extremist ideas, as Google for instance did with its Jigsaw project. AI applications can help save lives of soldiers through better on-site medical diagnoses. AI can also put fewer of them in harm's way in the first place because of the emergence of unmanned, which is different from autonomous, unmanned systems. And AI applications can automatically patch up cyber vulnerabilities in critical vulnerability minutes where a human team would take months. At the same time, AI applications can also be used in an offensive way, precisely to identify and exploit such vulnerabilities. AI applications can allow actors to provide defensive and offensive systems with greater degrees of automation and autonomy. Some conflict actors may even eventually grant full autonomy to offensive systems by taking the human out of the loop entirely. And even absent that situation, AI applications can provide a critical edge to military organisations who can observe, orient, decide and act much faster. And then as a result of that, existing current generation military capabilities may lose their value. And finally, the integration of AI application can also inject greater uncertainty and friction in the security environment. It can thereby diminish predictability, and this is likely to aggravate the odds of escalation in a conflict. But the point here is that precisely because application can be used for good and for bad, we need to approach the emergence of AI with caution. At the same time, we need to carefully distinguish between different uses, purposes and applications in considering its impact. The third point, these functions are executed through algorithms that run on software. Most, although certainly not all, of these algorithms and the software they run on is of a dual-use nature, which means that it can be used both in military and in civil contexts. But as you probably also know, software is eminently scalable. It's essentially an issue of copying the lines of code, and you can then apply that software programme elsewhere in similar system. Therefore, once you have a specific AI application working, it is comparatively easy and comparatively cheap to roll that out more widely in similar systems. Certainly if you compare that to the cost of producing traditional military hardware, where each platform costs a lot of money. Fourth, it's precisely because such AI applications are eminently scalable, there are significant implications for the question how the production, the proliferation and the use of a wide variety of AI applications can be controlled by international regimes. In the nuclear domain, for instance, nuclear weapon powers require an entire infrastructure to sustain their capability, which includes delivery vehicles, testing and enrichment facilities, critical technologies and a supply chain which can be monitored. In the AI domain, that is not necessarily the case. And this situation is further complicated by the fact that a lot of AI research is done by private actors who are not necessarily under government control or willing to work with governments. So how to control the production proliferation of AI is the topic of the second session this morning, and this will therefore be useful to discuss in that context. Fifth, near-term development in AI is likely to take place in ANI, or artificial narrow intelligence. Further more disruptive developments are likely to be farther out in the future. But also in the coming decade, plenty of ANI applications are likely to be very important for defence organisations, and it will undoubtedly affect the way they operate and the way they fight. So AI is multifaceted, it's multipurpose, it is scalable, it is not necessarily easily controllable, and it is likely to have both long-term but also short-term effects that are respectively disruptive but also incremental in nature. Now, in a security and defence context, the potential impact of AI has not escaped the attention of military organisations. In fact, the defence organisations of leading military powers, the US, China, Russia, are taking AI very seriously and are expanding serious efforts in exploring the potential of both piecemeal and disruptive effects of AI. These three states have announced AI policies and strategies, they've established units at the heart of their defence departments, and they are investing literally billions and billions of euros. We don't have enough time to go into the specifics in a lot of detail, but just to give some illustration to these general observations. In 2014, the US launched the Third Offset Strategy with a specific objective to preserve its military pre-eminence through breakthroughs in AI-enabled areas, including autonomous deep learning machine systems, advanced human-machine combat teaming and network-enabled semi-autonomous weapons. As part of that sort of longer approach, it's only this summer that the Pentagon established the Joint Artificial Intelligence Centre with a budget of 1.7 billion over the next five years. And this month, I believe last, this month, the US Defence Advanced Research Project Agency announced the AI Next campaign with a budget of $2 billion to kick-start the next wave of AI innovation in a defence context. In short, US strategists and policymakers really think that AI will provide the US with a military edge, and they're not only talking the talk but also walking the walk where it concerns AI-related defence R&amp;D. For China, a similar picture emerges. Last year, China announced its plan to be a world leader in AI in 2030. The objective in the military arena of the People's Liberation Army, the POA, is to make the shift from informatised warfare, and they knew it from the 1990s, to intelligentised warfare. In order to achieve this, China has established the Intelligent Unmanned Systems and Systems of System Science and Technology Domain Expert Group, that's a mouthful, no need to translate that. It has also set up a fusion military-civilian AI zone in order to facilitate the military uptake of civilian AI R&amp;D conducted by companies. Russia is also committed to developing its AI capabilities. From Vladimir Putin, we have the famous quote that whoever becomes the leader in this sphere will become the ruler of the world. Russia has established the Russian Foundation for Advanced Research in order to close the gap in advanced research between Russia and the West, and it is especially seeking to catch up in the development of autonomous systems. The Russian Military Industrial Committee set the ambitious target of making 30% of military equipment robotic by 2025. While Russia is often characterised as very much focusing on the development of autonomous and semi-autonomous systems, for the US and China, it seems that efforts target the entire observe, orient, decide, act, or in military terms, the OODA loop. AI applications that are being researched and are developed concern early warning models for conflict onset, intelligence collection and analysis, battle space analysis, target acquisition, medical diagnoses, real-time translations, automated cyber operations, unmanned semi-autonomous systems, new swarm concepts with large numbers of small disposable vehicles, and also, and this is very serious, AIs that can explain themselves to humans to improve the trust between humans and machines. Now, let me turn to the implications and wrap up here, Madam Chairwoman. What are the implications? A key question, of course, concerns how the emergence of AI will affect global security. This is early days, and AI will have myriad impacts. Let me highlight only a few here, both on the positive and on the negative side. On the positive side, more precise targeting through AI may make war, paradoxically, more humane. Similarly, there may be fewer fatalities as a result of man-machine teaming and uniform personnel not being put in harm's way. AI-enabled better medical treatment is likely to result in lower battle death rates. And similarly, AI, as I already touched upon, will open up opportunities to improve early warning, to inform early action, because it will provide better and more timely insight in causes of conflicts and escalation processes. And it may even facilitate de-escalation in strategic decision-making processes, because AIs will be able to furnish different options than commonly considered in crisis decision-making. But on the negative side, there are plenty of serious negative implications too. The inclusion of AI in existing military capability portfolios can upset the existing military balance of power by making traditional systems and doctrines obsolete. What is more, the political costs of going to war are likely to be lower if fewer humans are sent to the front, thereby taking away an important constraint to go to war. Immature AI applications rushed into military platforms can lead to spiral dynamics when they run out of control in uncertain environments, as sometimes happens in financial trading. And what is more, conflict can speed up to such a degree that human intelligence can no longer keep up, especially if some conflict actors decide to remove people, the human, out of the loop and leave the decisions to AI applications. And this will provide opponents then with an important dilemma, whether to keep the human in the loop and possibly face defeat, or follow suit and take the human out of the loop. When that happens, a battle between AIs may involve, and then not only the character but also the nature of war will drastically change, leading to a whole new era in human history, where machines will fight against one another. So that, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, remains science fiction for now, but the scenario, that scenario does vividly illustrate that very important ethical and legal questions can never be considered in isolation from the military strategic ramifications associated with the rise of new military technologies. So I'm therefore pleased that we're talking about this today, and I look forward to our discussion, your questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that tour de force of an overview of where we are and where we may get to with AI in the defence field. So it is now my pleasure to introduce our second speaker, Mrs Wendy Anderson, who, as I said, is Adjunct Senior Fellow at the Centre for a New American Security.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you. To Mrs Moody, thank you very much for moderating this distinguished panel. I also wanted to give my thanks to Mrs Fatiga, who I know is not here today but whom I hope to meet at some point in the future, and just generally to the Subcommittee on Security and Defence. I can't actually think of a more important and sort of potent topic at this particular moment, knowing that we all have a very long list of important and potent topics that we're trying to deal with depending on whichever country we come from. So I just wanted to say thanks to the members who are here, and also, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. A couple of quick things for context, just so you know. I am not, nor do I position myself as some sort of AI thought leader. I'm interested in it. I've been engaged in technology and defence innovation for many, many years, but I want to start off with what I am not, okay? This is not something I've been doing from the age of six, when I was taking apart Commodores in the 1970s in the United States. My CEO, I'm now at a particular company and I also am a fellow at CNAS, is the kind of person to do that. I am what I refer to as an AI practitioner, meaning I am running a particular side of a defence artificial intelligence company, and I'm engaged with defence companies and also the United States Government and other governments, trying to figure out how do we apply AI in a real way in the defence and national security space. Quickly, I had the great privilege of serving as a chief of staff to a former American Defence Secretary, so that's how my AI practitioner self was sort of born. I was Ash Carter's chief of staff when he was in the Pentagon, rose with him sort of through the ranks. Fortunately for me, he thought I was kind of a good person to hang out with, so I got to ride on the coattails. to ride on the coattails of someone who I think was not only a tremendous and sort of steady hand of the American Department of Defence, but a great innovative, challenging sort of practitioner of what defence innovation, and also introducing commercial innovation into the defence enterprise in the United States looked like. I just wanted you to have that context so you'll understand more of the source of my particular set of comments today. Let me just start by saying that, you know, in sort of the long arm of history, and I won't sort of pinpoint from where I'm starting, there have been really only, I think, a handful of truly fundamental changes in how war is waged, right? We can run through sort of a basic list. The employment of cavalry, the introduction or the advent of the rifled musket, a combination of fast armour with air support and instant radio communications in execution of the blitzkrieg strategy during World War II, the advent of nuclear weapons, I would also add to that list. And I think technological developments from a variety of fields, not just defence, come together to produce these seismic shifts, and I think we're at or on the precipice of another one regarding artificial intelligence. The question that I would pose to you all, and I know obviously the European Parliament, particularly the Subcommittee, is dealing with these salient and relevant and timely questions right now, is what do you want your role to be? You know, we in the United States are trying to, and who do I mean by we? There's a lot of different things that I mean by we. This administration not being one of them, meaning in the United States. We former policymakers, I served in the Obama administration, many of us have tried to take on this very relevant question. Now I'm doing it both from a think-tank point of view and also from private industry. It looks different than it did when I was serving in the executive branch and even in the congressional branch in the United States. So I really am leaving you, I know you're probably already thinking about it, but I'm leaving you with that question and sort of encouraging you to be imaginative with it. What do you want the role of Europe to be? Not only the particular countries that you yourselves represent as MPs, but also speaking as a European Union, what do you want that role to be? And I think there are many, many answers to that. I've read a lot of exceedingly and exceptionally sort of smart and thoughtful, challenging answers to it at this moment, but I'm curious to know over time, and I'm also committed to running through a couple of thoughts and observations and maybe even recommendations, if you'll be so gracious. I know it's not always pleasurable to sort of sit where you're sitting and have some random American come in and offer observations and recommendations on what Europe should be doing, but I come really as a partner and as an ally, and with a deep sense of not only my own familial, but also our intellectual shared partnership in how we approach problem-solving. I think what I'd like to do is really just accept Tim's very solid and very astute definitions of artificial intelligence. I'm not going to run through that list again. I think he had a very sophisticated way of not only talking about broadly how important these terms are, so we actually have some sense of what we're talking about when we use a complicated term like artificial intelligence, but I think he also did a very nice job of actually analytically parsing out narrow intelligence from AGI or artificial general intelligence and so forth. So again, with my practitioner hat on, I'm going to leave the definitions that he gave and sort of just accept them and say, I agree with the terminology that he has laid out and accepted into my own remarks. You know, I think that we all know AI is not new. Now, for someone who is sort of new to the conversation of artificial intelligence, it might seem so, right? But we know Alan Turing's contributions to AI, we understand these chapters in the last 30 to 50 to 60 years that have happened in Europe to large extent and also in the United States. So AI is not new, but I, so I think some perspective might be helpful at this point. You know, remotely piloted vehicles don't really qualify, they're remotely humanly piloted after all, but cruise missiles already fly to an aim point and detonate warheads automatically. This is already happening, okay? So would nuclear warheads on ballistic missiles, if God forbid, nuclear-tipped ICBMs or something else were launched in combat? Semi-autonomous systems are already in use on the battlefield. I could bore you to death with a number of different systems in the United States, particularly in the United States Navy, that are already actively employing these semi-autonomous systems, but I won't go there. What I want to actually focus on today in my remarks and really leave you with is the sense that what really is coming are technologies that, for lack of a better phrase, are learning on the job. Not simply following prepared plans or detailed algorithms for detecting targets, but developing their own information and their own guidelines for action based on the conditions they encounter that were not initially foreseeable in specific. I mean, I think that's quite an interesting sort of description of really what sets this moment, this seismic ship, as I somewhat melodramatically narrated, but I think the melodrama is actually called for with a set of technologies like this, because here we are. The AI train has left the station. However we feel about it is actually irrelevant. The fact is, is realistically, we are already engaged, I don't really want to say in an arms race, because I don't want to use that sort of, you know, combative language or infer it, but certainly there is a competitive global arms race on the defence side for AI, and who will out-advance the other. I think the interesting moment about AI being introduced now as essentially, I think, will be one of the great geopolitical differentiators technologically in this century, is the fact that it focuses us on how do we think about, how do we develop a sort of near-term, medium and long-term agenda for defence innovation and then expeditiously move down that path? Now, I say that somewhat sarcastically, knowing that your bureaucracy and our bureaucracy have long reputations and are troublesome and annoying, and that we have to constantly creatively find ways to shortcut ourselves around them in order to introduce real innovation, particularly into the defence space, obviously, which is what I'm talking about today. I think people have some good reasons to fear this Terminator, you know, like set of entities, but what I would say is, and I'm sure that this sophisticated audience already knows this, but the anxieties about something like that are radically premature. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't take them on board and be thinking creatively and again thoughtfully. Legal, you know, in terms of legal implications, the ethical and moral implications, the regulatory implications, we should actually absolutely be taking all of that into account now. But the anxieties about it and the sort of, you know, sexy hype surrounding what really killer robots, and it's just from an American perspective and from someone who now spends a lot of time in Silicon Valley, and a lot of time in innovative cells around the United States and in other parts of the world, it's just a premature set of anxieties. We all have enough anxiety, you know, in our lives anyway, so I would just say, put that at the bottom of the list. We're a couple of decades away from that. If somebody wants to take me on and advocate or argue a different point, absolutely feel free to do that. I think what I would like to focus on, and I'm happy, by the way, in the Q and A session to take on where I think the United States is, I actually think we're falling behind in the AI arms race, and I'm again happy to sort of extrapolate on any of these points. I don't feel necessarily pessimistic about it, I'm just realistically trying to assess our investments, our talent pool, what the outlook looks like, the fact that we don't have a national AI plan. I mean, there are lots of different sort of metrics that I'm incorporating into my analysis of why I think we're falling behind. I think we're still with China, the sort of two to beat at the moment. And again, I'll say more about that in a little bit, but what I really wanted to focus on is my observations, and again, maybe recommendations for this sophisticated audience to take on as you all are sort of munching on how to problem-solve this. So I think I'll basically just say that, you know, as I described in the United States, but it's also obviously here true in Europe, that you're wrestling with the implications of AI and machine learning in the military and in the civilian context. And in the last year or so, I have had, gosh, probably, I don't know, two or three dozen conversations. And one of the things that I've noticed is a significant and profound uptick in the number of NATO military or NATO political and military leaders and also politicians or MPs like yourselves discussing AI's impact on the alliance, particularly obviously on the alliance's military capability, as well as more generally speaking about AI's impact on other parts of the economy. And there really, to me, seems to be a two sort of pronged discussion going on here. One is that European defence industry officials that I've talked with and stay in touch with, you know, seem to have no qualms, as I think they shouldn't, about harnessing AI to reduce manufacturing costs or improve customer satisfaction and so forth. And I think that certainly that would be true for other decision-making tools across the board and so forth. It's 9:50, so yes, like one more minute, is that okay?
A few more minutes, yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you bet. But I also think that, you know, AI means different things to different people, and it's been variously described, you know, as sort of hoovering up personal data to magic dust or secret sauce, depending on who you're talking to and sort of what the anxiety level is. Not all NATO member governments are spinning their wheels, we know. I have to be honest with you, Emmanuel Macron in France has demonstrated quite exceptional leadership, I think, on the AI front. We can talk about that more in the Q and A session, but it was really interesting for me to hear him talk about, you know, let's think about France as a startup. I thought, what an interesting thing to say, and what an interesting thing to come out of that country, and what an interesting statement to come from a leader out of Western Europe. Whether or not that's possible, you know, let's just sort of push that over to the side, but it was an incredibly sort of interesting way, I think, he had of framing, how do you become a startup nation with regards to AI and disruptive technologies? I'll save the rest of my remarks, but I'll end, Mrs Moody, with just sort of six quick things to think about. I will not go into them in detail. I would say, what more can the nations of Europe do to take part, you know, in AI? How can NATO allies avoid widening the interoperability gap between the United States and member countries? I think quickly, six things, and I've written about this in some detail and I'm happy to provide that. Number one is just sort of, you know, don't wait, I don't say that patronizingly, we're in the exact same spot for different reasons. Again, the trains left the station, now is the moment to sort of embrace the difficult questions. Number two, you know, artificial intelligence is not about buying America. It's a really important point. I think that point probably stands on its own, it's not a US-only intelliging or marketing technique to sort of sell our products. Three, you know, artificial intelligence needs a whole-of-government approach, which a forum like this, I think, is clearly indicating. Number four, I would just sort of say, you know, I think it's tempting, you all correct me, to maybe protect a nascent European AI industry by locking out other foreign competition or American companies. I would just say, sort of from a partner-to-partner, no fortress Europe point of view on this is really key. We don't always do this well either, by the way. We have a long list of things that we actually do quite poorly, but I would say in terms of keeping that openness to competition, it's critically important. Number five, obviously, the European Union and NATO are probably the two most critical pieces to figuring out the AI puzzle here in Europe and how you all will deal with, not only member states, but obviously European Union in dealing with AI in continental Europe. And number six, shaping the rules. You have the influence and the opportunity to do that. This group of people is a testament to that. And I would just simply say that, you know, we can't sit this out and then expect to have our concerns heard, to be engaged with how this outcome will end up becoming a resultant outcome. We have to have a seat at the table or shove our way in from the beginning and participate in the shaping of rules, not only for our own individual nation's security, but also for our collective security as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you as well for the important challenge that you put to us as well about thinking about our role into the future on this one. And thank both speakers for your very informative presentations. It is now the chance to open up the floor, and indeed, Mrs Valero, if you'd like to.
Thank you very much. If I was concerned before I came here, I'm not less concerned now, really. And especially when you say that we should think about our role, I think that here in the parliament, we have thought about our role in several occasions already. We have asked for a ban, an international ban on autonomous lethal weapons. And we recently adopted also a resolution where 566 members, we are, because we are fearing that time is running out in this case, and we want the Commission and Council to work or to adopt a position, because if we want to go to the UN with an idea of what we are going to do, we have to have a position, and that is not the case in the moment, only here from the parliament. Yes, we have a position, and I think really that the role of Europe should be to work for a ban on these weapons. I think we cannot say that it's, well, it's decades away. We have to think for 100 years ahead. We cannot think only for this decade or for two decades, we have to think for many decades. And I wonder, is this really possible to stop? If we don't get an international ban, is this possible to stop? Because as, when I listen to you, Mrs Anderson, it feels like, well, the arms race is going on, we are, US is laying behind, so we have to do more, and we have to do it together with Europe maybe. Is it possible to stop it? I am really, really concerned, and what's maybe for the next panel more, it's about the decision-making and so on, but unfortunately, I have to go to another meeting, but about the decision-making, the responsibility. Who takes the responsibility? Who are we going to charge when something goes wrong? Or if this weapon system comes in the wrong hands? Because that can happen, we know that. And we have no, even if we are democracies now and we have a system that should function, we have no idea what kind of governments we have afterwards, and if they were to change anything or reprogram these systems. So it's, I'm so terribly concerned, really, and I'm really much more concerned after this, this, your ring.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. If I may, if I may, I would like to touch upon a different subject. And I would also like to touch upon what my predecessor has just said. I do think this process cannot be stopped. It cannot be stopped, but however, I would like to touch upon a different issue. So let's have a look at what happened in the past in terms of technology race. What did it look like? Well, the military used to develop some very modern applications, let's say, in terms of GPS technology or computers, the military was always first. And then, step by step, those solutions, those applications trickled down to the civilian area. But... But today, we are being faced with a completely new situation. So I have the following question. Well, we are talking about research on AI, but they are being done at the same time in many different places. So can we use the results of that research at the same time, both in the military and in the civilian area? Is it like that? So that's the first thing. And then we have this strictly military research, which is specific to the military, and the civilian part of the research does not touch upon those strictly military matters, and that is, of course, clear. But I think that this possibility to merge the results of research for dual-use applications is very important, especially in terms of control, if we are to control these applications later on in the field.
Thank you very much. I came across an article in The New Yorker recently in May of this year, which posed the question, how frightened should we be of artificial intelligence? It was written by a gentleman with the name of Ted Friend, which resembles my name very closely, but this is where the analogy ends. I have much less clue, or basically no clue, about what he was writing. But I want to quote a short paragraph of what he wrote. Precisely how and when will our curiosity kill us? I bet you're curious. A number of scientists and engineers fear that, once we build artificial general intelligence, doomsday may follow. Elon Musk, whom we all know, Tesla and so on, once again summoning the demon, envisaging an immortal dictator from which we can never escape. Stephen Hawking declared that an AGI, quote, "could spell the end of the human race." And then it poses the ultimate question that I would like to repeat. Will it come on little cat feet, sort of a slow takeoff predicated on incremental advances in ANI? Or will it be the Godzilla stomp of a hard takeoff in which some, as yet unimagined algorithm is suddenly incarnated in a robot overlord? I would be curious to know what you think, how this will come on us. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. I think that's the last question I have in this round. So what I will do is ask Mrs. Anderson to respond first, and then kind of with concluding remarks for this part of the hearing, and then Tim, if you'd fully.
I very much like to first respond to you, and I appreciate the honesty and sort of the passion with which you articulated the question. Some of our different starting points, obviously, are, you know, reasons having to do with different backgrounds and how we come at these particular questions. But I will give you just my view. I'm not saying it's the truth. I'm just saying it's my view, informed from working in national security on the American side and in the Defense Department for so many years. I don't think bans work. I'm just a realist on this. I wish they did. I wish we lived in a world where we didn't have nuclear weapons. I wish a lot of things. I wish that I could say things should be exactly as you say, because I would spend the rest of my life trying to make that true. I just don't believe in shoulds. I really don't, just based on my own experience and my own set of sort of biographical and autobiographical experiences. I think bans don't make sense because they don't work. So if you consider, for example, the Nonproliferation Treaty as an analogy, despite many countries having signed the NPT, a ban on the use and further development of nuclear weapons, the treaty hasn't prevented North Korea from building a nuclear arsenal, et cetera. We have our own nuclear arsenal with which we can attempt to deter. So again, whether it's right or wrong, and I'm just one of these Americans who really doesn't need to be right, it's just my view that, you know, it's more of a deterrent capability. When I say AI and these sorts of disruptive technologies have left the station, that's actually what I mean. We're already in it. I don't think they work, and I don't think they make sense. And I'll just add a couple of additional statements also to Mr. Freund about Elon Musk saying that, you know, AI is essentially akin to summoning the demon and so forth. I have to be honest with you. You know, I think technology is in and of itself neutral. I don't think it's inherently good or bad. I think humans make it such, right? So, you know, in the responsible hands, it can augment human capacity to unlock heretofore unthought-of potential. Every single modern or postmodern, or whatever adjective you want to put in front of the era in which we live, is defined by some creativity and some imaginative capacity to unlock the potential of technology. So I am a big believer in that. I'm not necessarily a believer that it will always end up going well, but I think that we are a testament in Western Europe and in North America to the fact that it's actually gone okay. Yeah, so for me, technology is by itself neutral. I think AI can be positive. It can be a lot of other things in addition to, again, I think the rightful, you know, sort of anxieties and hesitations that you've laid out. But I think it's irreversible. I just don't have any evidence or data to suggest that the opposite is true. Regulations and controls will not prevent the development of AI. All you have to do is sit and meditate for 15 minutes on what the Chinese are doing to know that. And I would encourage you to do that. I mean, it's quite something, actually, whether it's investments, whether it's a $2 billion facility in Shanghai, whether it's $150 billion plan that they have to be the global dominant AI force in the world by 2030. I mean, there are just many, many, many data points. It's not just my feeling or my belief. I am basing my statements really on the data, the sort of geopolitical data of technological investment around the world right now. And the Chinese, according to Eric Schmidt, who is a recently resigned chairman of the Alphabet Group, right, which was Google's parent company, I had the opportunity in a crowd with him, I'd say maybe two months ago, "Mr. Schmidt, if you had to say today, how long would you say it would take before the Chinese truly have out-advanced the United States on the development of AI?" And he said, "Four or five years." Now, again, maybe he's wrong, but again, the data suggests that the trend line is in that direction. So I just wanted to, you know, say that, to me, having these kinds of honest, in-depth, and sadly inconclusive conversations, because I want a definitive something to be able to do too, like what this forum, you know, is intended to do, you know, that time has to be spent now talking about how we create and develop and deploy the technology. And again, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be thinking about these things, but I actually truly do believe that we should put the idea of a ban aside and stop investing energy in something that honestly, at the end of the day, will not result in the intent behind the ban. And let's put our energy into building safe artificial intelligence and to figuring out how we systematize and regulate in a way that doesn't stifle innovation, but also protects our countries and the collective security of the United States and Europe. Again, just my view, but I appreciate your sentiments and very much appreciate the questions from the members.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And now for responses and concluding remarks, Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. Ms. Valero, you raise a very important point. If you look at military history, I think there's never been a chance, there's never been an occasion in which states have not taken up the chance to get a military competitive edge over their competitors, if they could. So if you look at the adoption of machine rifles, or aircraft for military purposes, or unrestricted submarine warfare, or tanks rather than horses, states always adopted that technology when push came to shove. And that is an observation that I make as a student of war. That said, it means that if we, as Europeans, want to have an impact, have a say in how this technology develops in the future, I think we need to know what's going on, we need to build up our knowledge of it, but we also need to be involved in order to be able to set standards. And I think that governments, especially European governments, can play a very important role in promoting our norms by acting and promoting standards and norms in this field. And that is, the second session is, of course, dedicated to this. That, of course, also applies to the dual-use technology that you alluded to. Not all technology is dual-use, because in the military arena, things tend to be slightly more complicated in cluttered battle environments. You need to have perhaps even better systems. But in order to set those standards and to make sure that they are not misused, I think that governments should have a role and be involved. And third, with respect to that fascinating New Yorker article that I also read, yes, is it incremental change or major change? So I don't want to speculate on the overlord that will rule us all, but I do want to sort of raise the fact that in the 1990s, we had the emergence of, well, internet emerged earlier, but the sort of the larger segments of the natural populations got access to the internet. And then sometime, I think in 2006, another luminary, Bill Gates, said that he expected that ICT technologies would have a major, sorry, a much bigger impact in the next 15 years than they had in the last 15 years. And I thought, how is that possible? It's 2006, we have email, I already look things up online, I can shop online. And then what happened between 2006 and 2018? We had, I mean, the emergence of YouTube, WhatsApp, the massive impact of the social mediification of our societies and economies. And so essentially, what I'm trying to say, sir, is that these incremental changes, after a few years, before you actually know it, lead to sort of a qualitative change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And having you thinking that you have done, I actually, unfortunately, missed a colleague earlier as well. Mr. Buchner, did you want to ask a question?
Thank you very much. You said, any new technology is neutral. I think it is not. I myself, a nuclear physicist, and I do not consider this part as neutral. What we can do is to make an assessment of the dangers of such a thing. Of course, there will be some advantages, no question, but isn't it our really, our mandate to look, as you have said, to look at the dangers and to develop things which prevent the dangers? It is true that China is doing much work in this field. Okay, so our response cannot say, cannot be to do the same, to develop the same. But our response must be, how can we stop this? How can we have a treaty, a common treaty, before all the world uses this technology? The nonproliferation treaty was too late, that's the problem. And if it had come earlier, we could have avoided a lot of problems. So I think here, behind the fortunate situation that we still have time, no, we must start immediately, but we have the chance to do something that the worst things are avoided. And that's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that goes to the point around the challenges we face with developing legislation in timely fashions or, you know, regulatory environment. Could it please?
Just a quick, as a physicist, I imagine you're, of course, also familiar with the history of the Manhattan Project and the extra thoughts that scientists that collaborate in the Manhattan Project exposed, had afterwards, had. But also the fact that it was sort of hard to uninvent the nuclear bomb.
Exactly.
And the many decades that it took the Soviet Union and the United States to figure out all sorts of control mechanisms, including national technical means of verification, which is very interesting for our second panel, to make sure that they would be able to monitor each other's nuclear capabilities and thereby stop the nuclear arms race that was going on during the Cold War. So what I take from your astute observation is, how can we think about national technical means of verification in an AI context? And I think that is the topic of the second panel, so I won't sort of...
Perfect. Very neatly segue. Thank you very much. I feel redundant. And thank you both indeed for your contributions, and I hope you will stay for the remaining part of the hearing. So, colleagues, it's now indeed time to turn to the more detailed, nitty-gritty of the subject area and regulating artificial intelligence, particularly with reference, obviously, to the area of defense. And so at this point, I would like to hand over the floor to Mr. Defoe and ask, as Director of Governance of AI Program, Future of Humanity Institute, not a large area at the University of Oxford, please take the floor.
Thank you very much. And thank you to my co-panelists for some very productive initial remarks. So I'll proceed quickly through that, which is a bit redundant, so that we can get to the newer material. So AI has become a major site of focus, of interest, in the media and elsewhere. Much of this interest is driven by hype and misunderstanding, but it is my belief that the critical insight that AI will be an important technology of this century is correct. In fact, I would argue that how we build advanced AI will be the defining development of the 21st century. The potential upsides are tremendous, but so are the governance challenges. It's important to understand what AI is. I will offer a different perspective on it that complements the earlier remarks. I think it's useful to think of AI as a general-purpose technology. This is a concept in economics and other fields that links technologies like electricity, the combustion engine, flight, and the microprocessor. General-purpose technologies transform some crucial input to economic and other processes like transportation, energy, or information processing. In so doing, they generate a raft of implications and ultimately can transform the economy, society, and the military. General-purpose technologies are hard to control, as has been already discussed, because they are so deeply dual-use, and they tend to diffuse throughout the economy. Finally, the impact of general-purpose technologies are very hard to predict. I would posit that AI is not just a general-purpose technology, but it is likely to be the most transformative general-purpose technology. I would put forward what we might call the sufficiency hypothesis, which is that the science of AI, as it exists today and without any further fundamental improvements, is already sufficient to radically transform global welfare, wealth, and power. That is, even if fundamental progress in AI were to stop today, we are still likely to see major governance challenges merely from the development and deployment of existing AI capabilities. Possible challenges include massive labor displacement, increased inequality, erosion of privacy, shifts in power to AI authorities, risks of nuclear instability, a reorganization and concentration of the... and concentration of the global economy, and as we're discussing extensively today, the militarisation of AI. However, fundamental progress in AI is not stagnating, or does not seem to be stagnating. The state of the art is impressively moving forward each year. We continue to see advances in areas such as meta-learning and transfer learning, unsupervised learning, imagination-based planning, learning from human experts, and the merging of different kinds of reasoning, such as what's called model-free and symbolic inference. Given this, it is very hard to forecast the capabilities, applications and challenges that will arrive in the coming 10 to 20 years. But nevertheless, this leads one to ask, by when might we see radically transformative capabilities, or even what has been called artificial general intelligence, broadly human-level AI? The short answer is that we just don't know. And anyone who confidently predicts when it will occur either knows something that they're not telling us, or is not well-calibrated in their probabilities. For what it's worth, depicted here is a graphical depiction of the beliefs of top AI researchers when asked in 2016 about when AGI effectively will arrive, across-the-board better than human AI. The X-axis is years from 2016, the Y-axis is the implied probability that it would arrive by then. And there's a few takeaways from this figure. If you can make out the background grey, that's a random sample of individual responses, and you'll see that there's wide disagreement. Some respondents give a high probability of it arriving in 10 years. Those are the grey curves that go up very quickly. Some AI experts give a low probability of it arriving in 100 years. Those are the ones that are near the X-axis. And then most are somewhere in between. The red line depicts the median, but if you take the average or other summary statistics, you get a similar result, which basically says, we don't know when it could arrive, but we can't rule out that it could come soon, in the next 10 to 20 years. We also can't rule out that in 100 years, we still wouldn't have gotten there. And I think there's a reasoned basis for all of these positions. Okay, there are several features of AI that are likely to pose challenges for its governance. AI is rapidly changing and it is hard to predict advances in AI. AI is a general-purpose technology and so will be fundamentally transformative. And for any given advance, it is hard to predict the total social impact. The harm, benefits and responsibility from AI may be diffuse. They may span not only different companies and regions within a nation, but in fact the whole globe. And for that reason, it seems like governance challenges with AI are inherently global and will require global cooperation to address. However, in my view, the source of the greatest difficulties for governing the challenges from AI is that great powers may come to perceive themselves to be in a high-stakes AI race, as has been mentioned, where they confront a trade-off between safety and other values and performance in the race. There is much confusion about AI races, and this confusion is dangerous because it is so important that we think clearly about it. So I'll begin by distinguishing between several different kinds of dynamics, some, most of which have been called AI arms races, but only a few of which are. First is talent competition. There's actually prominent people involved in this space who have referred to the AI arms race over recruiting AI researchers. And this is by a government official who is sort of complaining about how expensive it is to hire good AI talent from the Silicon Valley companies. So that is not an arms race, right? That is a natural part of a healthy economy in which scarce factors bargain between different actors, firms and governments. So that is not something we should invoke military metaphors over and is probably net beneficial for society. A second kind of dynamic is non-strategic international economic competition. Here again, the metaphor is largely inappropriate. Economic competition is not military competition. Economic competition is often net beneficial, whereas arms races are not. Finally, the kinds of policies often required in national AI strategies are mostly non-rivalrous investments, things like education, infrastructure and developing a healthy market ecosystem for AI startups. However, there is also a sense in which there can be strategic economic competition. This can arise if AI is generating strategic industries, global oligopolies, winner-take-all markets, or if industrial AI leadership increases national power. This kind of industrial race is a source of danger and will be among the harder dynamics to address because it is whole-of-nation. The dangerous parts cannot be walled off under an arms control agreement. We might call this a strategic industrial AI race. Finally, there can be AI military races, such as for advantages in narrow weapons technologies, like autonomous weapons, or more broadly for a revolution in military affairs. These are also dangerous, though also potentially controllable. They are the only kinds of race appropriately called an AI arms race. Okay, AI arms races and strategic industrial races pose substantial risks. First, they can lead to a massive waste of resources when investments are zero-sum, and both sides and the rest of the world could be made better off by directing those resources elsewhere. This occurred in naval arms races, conventional arms races and the nuclear arms race. Second, fears of losing national advantage could lead to attempts to militarise and securitise the industry of AI. Because AI is a general-purpose technology, you can't just put it on an export control list. Rather, AI will be central to the entire global economy, and so attempts to control it could undermine liberal economic world order and liberal domestic orders, which are based on models of open science and trade. Arguably, one of the motivations driving the US-China trade hostilities is the US concern about losing its technological advantage. A substantial closing of US and Chinese markets to each other is not implausible and would cause substantial harm to the world economy. Third, if great powers perceive themselves in a high-stakes technology race, it can become the site of animosity and provide fuel for existing animosities. It can generate a self-fulfilling spiral of hostility and fear. It could crowd out more productive international approaches to AI, such as collaboratively building AI for the common good. We are arguably seeing this beginning today. Fourth, and perhaps most importantly, race dynamics can expose the world to catastrophic danger as powerful actors perceive pressure to cut corners in safety. Often there are trade-offs between the short-term performance of a system and the longer-term safety and reliability of the system. To offer a hypothetical example that resonates with one Tim raised, imagine a future where autonomous cyber-AI agents are defending our networks. For safety, we could put a human in the loop, who has several hours to deliberate before taking any large-scale action. However, if a quick response is critical to performance, then there would be pressure to empower the AI cyber system with an autonomous response. In so doing, we might expose ourselves to the risk of what's been called a flash war, a rapid unforeseen escalation to high levels of hostility, analogous to the flash crashes that frequently occur with trading bots. We might think that surely we wouldn't expose ourselves to such a risk by allowing for hair-trigger autonomous escalation. But recall that during the Cold War, the US and Soviet Union built systems for nuclear retaliation, which suffered from false alarms in response to a variety of phenomena, such as weather rockets, reflections of the sun off the top of clouds, solar flares and the accidental playing of a training tape in NORAD headquarters. Fifth, these are the reasons why a race is dangerous. Fifth, there are also more subtle gradual risks, which may even be more harmful than the acute security risks I just mentioned. These involve the gradual erosion of our values as we trade them away for some profit or power advantage. For example, nations may perceive it hard to sustain values of privacy and equality in a strategic industrial AI race, where those values are obstacles to growing global AI champions. Okay, so those are some of the concerns. What can we do to address them? If the above dynamics do emerge, it will be very difficult to address, but there are some steps we can take. First, we can try to devise good norms and policies at what we can call the object level, that is addressing specific concrete issues. We do this through norms, initiatives and policies, such as around transparency, fairness, privacy and autonomous weapons. However, crafting object-level solutions is hard at this stage and will not be sufficient. We remain highly uncertain about the character of the problem, what we're trying to avoid, so it will be hard to reach consensus on object-level solutions. The object-level solutions that we can come up with will probably not be sufficient to address the main risks I mentioned above. I'll say briefly echoing the remarks of the earlier panelists about arms control with autonomous weapons, it's something we should certainly pursue and discuss and explore, but it will be a great challenge, as we learned from history. Properties of phenomena that are difficult to control are those that involve difficulties with unilateral verification of compliance, which AI is likely to be subject to, difficulties on agreeing what it is that is mutually beneficial for us, what is the bad and dangerous thing that we want to avoid, domains where the technology is evolving rapidly, and especially when it's being driven by not just military interests but also economic and external interests, when the character of the risk is changing rapidly and when the technology is dual-use, so it diffuses and is hard to control. Okay, so these difficulties should be clearly seen, they should be addressed head-on, but we should also make real efforts to try to find creative solutions. One of the fun things and promising things about AI is that there's a lot that's possible. So I'm going to sketch some very imaginative but potential solutions. For example, it may be possible that we could build a world where much of the hardware used for advanced AI has hardcoded properties with a tamper-proof verification system. This is in principle possible. To be even more concrete but more imaginative, we can imagine a world where we would build autonomous weapons that were built on top of trusted tamper-proof hardware that was itself geofenced to only being in defensive coordinates. If that were possible, that would do a lot to soften the security dilemma, in which one nation's defensive investment doesn't make afraid other nations. So working on the object level is important, but it will be hard to get sufficient object-level solutions to address all these risks. We can also zoom out to see a strategic level solution. We might call this the cooperation metanorm or channeling the AI race. This perspective is as follows: an unmanaged race for profit or power can lead to a race to the bottom on values such as safety. However, we can convert that into a race to the top if we can channel an independent reservoir of resources to support actors who behave in a globally cooperative way. To do this, we need several things. First, a large reservoir of resources that are motivated for the common good. This can include things like governmental funding and legislation, ethically-concerned AI talent, of which there is many, public and consumer sentiment, and pro-social labs, NGOs and firms. That reservoir of resources then needs to commit itself to supporting those AI actors who are best acting in the interests of the common good and not those who are not. One critical issue for this to work will be whether we can define what it means to act in the common good clearly enough so that these race-to-the-top incentives can be focused and meaningful. I believe this is a key part of the cooperation metanorm. Each AI actor should make efforts to explain how they understand the social obligation of an actor such as themselves and to explain the theory behind it. That is, cooperation in a fast-moving space like AI requires not just trying to do good, but also explaining how one thinks about doing good. As a first step in this, I believe a reasonable expectation is that responsibility ought to weigh most heavily on those who benefit most from AI and those who have the most control over AI. I would like to suggest that the EU could play a critical role redirecting an AI arms race and strategic industrial race from a race to the bottom into a race to the top. The EU is in a unique position to offer a counterweight to the US and China. The EU and its member countries are already active, trying to build norms and institutions for AI that balance innovation with other social values. The EU is well-placed to play a coordination role in a setting of best practice, such as in AI safety. Finally, the EU has reputational and institutional strengths in international cooperation, which could be a crucial asset for establishing cooperative global AI norms, institutions and programmes. In summary, I think how we govern advanced AI will be the most important issue of this century. If we do it poorly, it could cause substantial social disruption and harm. If we do it well, we will be in a much better position to address other global issues, like climate change and poverty. The key challenge in governing advanced AI will be how we deal with the AI race, how we govern or transcend it. For that, the EU could play a decisive role. Thank you.
Thank you, and well-deserved applause as well. Thank you very much for your comments, which were very thought-provoking. I'll now turn to our second speaker of this part of the hearing, Marcel Dico, who is Head of International Security Research Division, German Institute of International and Security Affairs. Please, Mr. Dico.
Thank you very much. It's a long name. Thank you for getting it right. Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, let me thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on the topic of AI and security today. I would like to mention that I speak in my personal capacity as a researcher of Stiftung Wissenschaft und Politik, and not as the coordinator of IPRO, which is the International Panel on the Regulation of Autonomous Weapons, which I have the pleasure to run since 2017. If you have questions on IPRO, please go ahead later on in the discussion. But various insights and conclusions of my presentations align with the work and results of IPRO though. You can find IPRO's four reports and the forthcoming final report online at ipro.org. And I also have some copies with me for distribution. AI will certainly have an important impact on security and defence applications in the future, as we heard earlier today. At the hard security end of the spectrum, AI will be implemented in weapon systems, for example, to support autonomous functions such as target identification, selection and engagement or attack. Many more different applications in the field of logistics, combat support, communication, command and control are developed at the moment or will be in the future. It is quite certain that the technology, its application and use will be regulated to a certain extent by militaries themselves, states, standard organisations, alliances under national and international law, as it has happened with other conventional technology as well. One reason though stands out out of this, it's the ability of an AI-enabled system to take decisions over if, how and when to use force, resulting in probably life and death of humans. This constitutes a fundamentally ethical question in answering. It defines important boundaries for regulation. I will focus my presentation today on the topic of the regulation of lethal autonomous weapon systems as the hard end, and as they are called in the framework of the CCW, which is the Convention on Certain Conventional Weapons in Geneva. The CCW is not the only international body to discuss laws, and there is certain discrepancy between our topic today and the term AI in weapon systems on the one hand and laws on the other hand. However, the CCW is the centre of gravity when it comes to legal assessments and possible regulations so far. In a nutshell, this is what you need to know with regard to discussions, processes, terminology and legal considerations that take place in the CCW. In 2017, the GGE, the CCW established a group of governmental experts, it calls GGE, to explore options for a regulation and possible working definitions. Until now, it has not made progress with regard to its mandate. Most likely, this GGE will continue to debate the topic in 2019. So far, there is neither an agreed definition on what a law is, nor could states parties find common ground whether those weapons already exist or not. Some states parties do have national definitions, so like the US or the UK, for example. The CCW is the form of international humanitarian law, more specifically humanitarian arms control. It therefore deals with legally acceptable use of weapon systems rather than with a regulation of the technology itself. This AI-centered approach has stimulated a discussion whether the L in laws, so whether the term lethal is helpful or needed, and has been kept for reason of continuity so far. It is more accurate to speak of autonomous functions in weapon systems rather than of autonomous weapon systems and to avoid, to anthropomorphise the machines' capabilities. For example, IPRO uses the term computational system or computational method to emphasise the importance of the relevant computational technique that are applied while avoiding expressions such as the system thinks decides etc. But humans obviously can delegate decision and task to a machine. Technical definitions are contentious and probably not feasible. The CCW focuses on, or focus on the human element in controlling the weapon system. The commander and operator are the entities to make the necessary legal judgements according to international humanitarian law when it comes to the use of force. In the centre of these judgements... And the center of these judgments are so-called the critical functions of a weapon system: the selection of and engagement with targets. The main question therefore is: How does human control over weapon system need to be designed, implemented, and exerted to safeguard compliance with international humanitarian law? At the heart of that international humanitarian law compliance are the following principles and legal judgments: distinction between combatants and non-combatants, military necessity and proportionality of the use of force, and precaution prior to the engagement. It is imaginable that the notion of human control develops into an additional IHL-relevant principle in the future, but it's not sure. So how does the impact of technology kind of has options for regulation? As I already mentioned, the technology plays an important role for possible regulations, directly and indirectly. In contrast to other weapon-related regulations, variables such as hardware and hardware-centered definitions, number of weapons, weapon types will not suffice to allow for a regulation. It is relatively easy to define a blinding laser, for example, to count main battle tanks, or to describe a sea-launched cruise missile. It is nearly impossible to classify a weapon system with autonomous functions in one or multiple steps of the procedures of target selection and engagement. What makes it distinct is the role of the human in every step of the so-called targeting cycle. The US dynamic targeting cycle that IPRO uses throughout its reports consists of six steps, and these are the most important ones: fix, find, fix, track, target, engage with targets, and later on assess the impact. It is important to understand that computational methods such as machine learning with neural networks can be used individually or combined in every step of this targeting cycle. Already today, AI-enabled weapon systems are rather a system of systems than distinct platforms. Its intelligent, well, let's better call them enhanced functionalities could be implemented in the warhead itself but rather be distributed over a network of sensors, processors, platforms, and effectors. Modular and swarming systems cooperate to fulfill the given task. Their capabilities develop with their network multiplicity rather than with a centralized processing unit. Man-man teaming adds the human factor to the equation, but the human role can vary from monitoring to steering a system or parts of it. While it might be easy to tell apart a manned system from a remotely piloted one, it is almost impossible to verify the role of a human operator in a weapon system with autonomous functions without deep insights into soft and hardware architecture as well as operational procedures. Autonomous functions are software-based features. When testing and evaluating these capabilities, data and context is as important as code and processing power. With machine learning and other statistical methods, quality and representation of training data turns the balance. I see a moral and ethical imperative to remain in control over weapon system at all times, but reasons for regulating lethal autonomous weapon systems go far beyond this perspective, including the ethical dimension. Four relevant categories are being discussed in the CCW and international fora at the moment. The first one is the operational dimension, and I quote here from IPRO's Focus on the Human-Machine Relation in Law's Report of March of this year. "At a very pragmatic level, there is a strong incentive to prevent fratricide amongst military forces, both personnel and equipment, as a way to maintain combat power and to reduce the risk to friendly forces. This overlaps with another pragmatic desire to achieve operational effectiveness, which is based on precision, predictability, and lethal efficiency. At a high but still pragmatic level, political leaders seek to maintain control over escalations. Militaries utilize a range of mechanisms to achieve and maintain control over violence. Advanced weapon systems have multiple modes, safety mechanisms, and highly scripted procedures to use that are developed to lead to successful engagements and to prevent fratricide at the same time. Extensive planning occurs in deliberate and dynamic targeting cycles to ensure the most effective weapons are used in a way that prevents fratricide, achieves operational objectives, and complies with legal justifications and political basis for conducting operations." End of quote. In summary, that means it is a military advantage to have control over the use of one's own weapon systems. Weapon systems need to be predictable and reliable to achieve precision and effectiveness. The second reason is legal. IHL is the legal basis in conflict and it's universal, even if some states have not ratified specific parts of the regimes such as the First Additional Protocol to the Geneva Convention. To adhere to the legal principles of international humanitarian law requires human judgment before, during, and after the use of force. For technical as well as legal reasons, it's not possible to delegate this judgment to machines. Furthermore, inappropriate human judgment requires sufficient situational understanding as the basis for the assessment. Only the involvement of humans in the targeting process and the ability of the operator or commander to intervene during operation safeguards responsibility and accountability within the military hierarchy. The third reason is international security and stability. Already today, the technology has achieved autonomous functions in weapon systems and it proliferates intensely. One reason is the importance of civilian drivers and stakeholders, science, industry, states, in its development, something we all support and do not want to regulate per se. In addition, a growing number of states is interested in harvesting potential military advantages of their respective technologies such as higher precision and increased fighting speed. An increasing number of countries have developed security-related AI strategies and have set in place military development and procurement programs in the field of remotely piloted and autonomous systems. This highlights the trend towards AI and defense. We observe arms dynamics, I do not want to talk about arms races, I call it arms dynamics, in the fields of laws, lethal autonomous weapon system, for example, among the P5 states, which are at the same time reluctant towards a regulatory approach in the CCW. Their interest in fighting at machine speed stimulates the risk of crisis escalation and regional destabilization. There will be an inevitable trade-off for increased battlefield speed, the loss of operational control. This is even more true when adversary laws interact with each other in the future. And the last and fourth reason is the ethical one. It is in principle unethical to delegate life and death decisions to machines, that's the question, in general and specifically in the area of defense. The answer to this question depends on the ethical theory you apply. To this end, the last IPRO report on ethical implications for a regulation of laws investigates the role of human dignity as the key concept in FX. It specifically asks two questions to explore the consequences for possible regulation, and these are the two questions: Does autonomy in weapon systems break the link to moral agency? And therefore violates the dignity of the victim or target of an attack? And the second question goes: Can consequences, so the expected advantage of a specific application of force in combination with autonomous functions and weapon systems, so can the consequences override issues of human dignity? By addressing these basic questions, IPRO comes to the following conclusion. I quote here again: "Depending on the moral position, one would assume or deny that autonomous functions and weapon systems break the link to moral agency. In the first case, it would be necessary to safeguard moral agency through human control. In the latter case, one would want to safeguard the ability to use a weapon system lawfully in the current state of technology. In consequence, both positions would require human control in both the design of the system and its use. Inherent in both views is the acknowledgement, tacit or implicit, of the principle of human control. So my conclusion: Let me emphasize that there are important incentives and objectives to regulate lethal autonomous weapon systems. As a direct regulation of a technology is probably unfeasible due to the lack of definitions of the subject. The CCW discusses, and that's very much in the line with its mandate, the regulation of the use of these weapon systems. Stronger regulations could also include the development, testing, and fielding of respective systems. The majority of the scientific community, including IPRO, civil society, and a growing number of states call for a positive regulation by requesting human control as the underlying principle for the design and the use of such weapon systems. Again, IPRO has proposed two criteria to specify and safeguard the concept of human control. The first one is control by design and in use. On the one hand, and the second one is situational understanding and the ability to intervene for the operator或commander of such systems, on the other hand. Weapons reviews, which are in accordance with Article 36 of the First Additional Protocol of the Geneva Convention, meaning testing and evaluation of weapon systems before fielding them, are necessary but not sufficient prerequisites to maintain human control over weapon systems during operation. Moral agency and human judgment with regard and prior to the use of force must not be delegated to machines and cannot be substituted by built-in technical procedures or features. Let me again stress the benefits of AI in defense applications in general. However, they must not lead to a lack of loss of human, lack or loss of human control when it comes to the use of force. In logistics, intelligence, and other fields, AI can play an important role to increase efficiency, like in any civilian field as well. Necessary conditions for responsible use such as transparency and accountability with regard to algorithms and data certainly do apply. Even a weapon system's autonomous functions can enhance precision, for example, in highly automated defense systems against incoming munition. However, computational methods such as unsupervised machine learning substantially challenge the concept of human control in weapon systems. Design and operational procedures, including training of personnel, must balance and limit such techniques to a degree conceivable in real time for human operators and commanders. Thank you for your attention. I'm happy to answer your questions in the following.
Thank you, Mr. Dicke. And thank you again. Right, the floor is now open to colleagues. Thank you both very much for the more precise looking at the actions that we should be taking. I have had indications from two colleagues so far, so first, Mr. Leitz.
Thank you very much for your presentations. I had to be out to a long timed appointment to fulfill. I was interested, I had ten days ago, a meeting with German diplomats who have been in the summer negotiations internationally on autonomous weapon systems, but also to some think tankers. We have a think tank, SWP, in Germany, who's think tanking just around the issues of your colleagues on the situation. And for us, it's a primarily interesting point that the European Parliament has committed itself on this issue, but not yet the national politicians, national parliaments. And if I'm not mistaken, I would be interested, Mrs. Anderson, at the negotiation internationally. For example, one of the countries who didn't want to build capacity on the international law on the autonomous weapon system is the US. How that could be further developed? Is there any understanding that we come to legal agreement that these weapon systems needs to be dismissed? And we are right now in the question, the European Parliament, that we do weapons research, R and D, and we give 13 billion from '21 to '27, and we, as a parliament, actually want to be clear that autonomous weapon systems should be not included into that situation besides that calling for Mogherini to make a strong statement, but also to the member states to fulfill, as we have different countries who are not really key to that situation. So the question is: How do you see America in this future debate on the UN level, but also other countries like, as has been mentioned in the morning as well, as China and Russia? They're also not interested in that one. So how do we fill that gap? Because the investment for us should be not into that autonomous weapon system, but actually to find out how we can use artificial intelligence but be clear that we are not topping on this. You said you don't want the dynamics, if you don't say race on that. Thank you.
Well, my colleague is...
Sorry, we've got another question as well.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. I'm going to throw it to you, actually.
Thank you, and thank you, Anna. I will also take the question from my colleague, Mr. Budkoff.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to our experts. I have three questions. One: In the past, during the Cold War, limiting arms races was only possible where either side was sharing the understanding that not doing that would be detrimental to their own ends. So if I go by that paradigm, how do you assess the state of play or the state of analysis with countries like China or Russia? What do you see as a possible starting point for shared understanding to solve the issue? Because if just one side wants to move ahead, nothing will. Second question: We had a discussion about laws in the European Parliament, and HR VP Mogherini boasted of the tech panel that she's having, but there is barely a member in the tech panel that really takes a critical view with regard to laws. How do you think the process should be shaped within the EU institutions and between EU institutions and member states to create the pertinent public conversation that we need? And the third question: Is there a limit of which you would say, "Well, there the buck must stop"? I mean, you've both described different strategies and different deliberations, but is there an absolute limit that we have to put to this development in order to prevent it from getting completely out of hand? And how would you define that? And can that be made the basis of progress in cooperation? Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to abuse my assistant's situation in the chair as well and intervene too, because I think it was a really interesting dilemma that you all pretty much touched on in terms of the conflict or the different tensions between this idea of you're in this race to be the first, to be the best, to lead the AI race, if you like, and this idea that you actually wait, hold back, regulate, put those safety systems in place, and that competing position. But you also, I think, all touched on, and this somewhat follows the last question, the role that the EU can play because of our reputation, because of the way we are seen in the world. And in that context, and perhaps avoiding because, you know, talking about the nuclear development, nuclear warfare development, the thing that actually was perhaps one of the turning points was the Cuba Missile Crisis in that, and how we can actually put something in place before we get to one of those accidental, or one of those escalation points that necessitates it. And in that context, actually, I was really interested in your suggestion, Mr. DeFoe, around the having some kind of body that has integral to it, this values, question mark, but bringing together the actors, and that the EU is perhaps in a position to do that. So I would welcome you elaborating on that, on that point. And particularly how, in following Mr. Butekova's points, that you would see that, and indeed, Mr. Leitz's, you would see that integrating into a kind of global system as well. Thank you.
I was, but the one thing that I don't do is speak about something that I actually just am not as informed on to be able to do it. So I'm actually going to throw it to Mr. De Feo and see if he has thoughts on it. I just don't want to make something up just to be able to, you know, sort of sound smart and answer something that I don't have enough information on.
Thank you. So in that case, I'm actually going to turn to Mr. De Geun first to respond to points and then ask if you would as well, Mr. De Feo, to respond and sum up.
Thank you. To the question of the role of national parliaments, there are a few national parliaments who had resolutions on the topic of laws, like in the Netherlands, for example. I'm not aware of resolutions in France and Germany. There is a debate between the houses in the UK about a definition of laws because the House of Lords asked the government and the parliament to come up with a new definition on what lethal autonomous weapon systems is, but the government declined to do that. So I think there is a lot of work to do. I'm aware of the German parliament who is interested in the debate and at least in the respective committee like the CDE here wants to do hearings about the topic, but that's certainly only a starting point. To the questions of Mr. Butekova, so where is common ground for regulation? Well, actually, at least in the debates in the CCW, all states agree or say iterate and emphasizes the importance of remaining human control over the weapon systems. And that goes in particular for those states who are kind of hesitating to introduce new legal instruments. So the US, for example, is the first one in all of the statements across all the GGE meetings who iterates that they always have control over the weapon system. So while a number of states probably would hesitate to agree that there is already a principle of human control, at least developing, they all refer to that principle as their national guiding line. So I think the common ground is that we do not have any interest in losing control over our weapon systems. And like the Cuba crisis moment for lethal autonomous weapon systems is certainly when two systems will start to interact with each other because you cannot test this situation. You're not able to test your lethal autonomous weapon systems against the system of an adversary. I mean, that's, that's the kind of nature of war. So you are in the risk of losing control over what happens because you cannot test it and because it will happen so fast that, that's the fighting at machine speed, that you probably not even have time to understand what's going on. So I think that is the moment where we should at least draw the line. I would personally draw it earlier. But I think that is one of the scenarios that everyone can understand and that certainly has important risks in build. The role of China and Russia. Russia, very hard to tell. China surprised the international community last year with a proposal to regulate, to ban the use of autonomous weapon systems. And it even proposed criteria, what a lethal autonomous weapon systems is. The problem is that it is not clear whether these criteria have to apply all or only one of the five criterias is enough. And it's only, what they propose is only a ban of the use of weapon systems. So everyone, according to this proposal, everyone would be free to develop these systems, but they are not, would not be allowed to use them. There is no official reaction of other states to that proposal. At the same time, obviously, the European Union speaks on behalf of the European Union in that fora, but does not have a kind of content-wise, a joint position. And that brings me to the last question of how to shape the political process in and between the EU institutions. I think that's a very good question where I probably don't have enough answers to it. So the parliament's resolution on lethal autonomous weapon systems of September this year, I think, was helpful because it led to a broad discussion about, in particular, ethical challenges to that technology. I am aware of member states to be hesitant to talk about this topic because there is no joint position of member states and member states do have different interests. Nonetheless, I think it's important that there will be an exchange between member states on common ground. I think it's probably not easy to facilitate this exchange. Certainly, the EU is the framework to do that. But I think coming to a joint EU position is not an easy thing. But, and this is the incentive, if the EU will manage to do that, I think that could be a good starting point for the rest of the international community to at least think about that compromise and kind of adjust their positions towards that EU compromise if it will come to light. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that also provides a neat segue to Mr. De Feo to respond to the questions and I hope elaborate on the possibilities of a race to the top as opposed to the bottom. Thank you.
Yes, so it would be great if I had the blueprint for global cooperation on advanced AI. We're a third through, so give us a few more months. So these are excellent questions being asked, and I think it's the right impulse to try to ask for concrete, you know, details and really to push this forward. And also in part response to the question of what fora should these conversations take place in? EU parliament or other institutions or national parliaments? I'm going to give a bit of a waffle answer, which is that it's very early days in governing AI. It's, and also per the question of where is the sort of final red line that we should, you know, not let things go past? I don't think we can specify what I've called object level sort of policies. Clear policies on exactly what the institutional arrangement should be, what should be the policies beyond which we won't pass and so forth at this point. We can try and we should try, but I think there's a risk that we push too hard for the final solution and then are frustrated or we get the wrong solution and then, you know, five years goes past and the policy completely failed. So I'm going to step back and again focus us on maybe some sort of higher level or meta solutions. So one is, I think we should be having this conversation very seriously, more seriously than we are today. In fact, these conversations in parliaments and other governance fora should be happening every day. In the same way that with governance of atomic weapons, right, nineteen forty-five, late forty-five, forty-six, that was almost, you know, the primary thing the world wanted to talk about, including, you know, what the UN would look like and how we would figure out Europe and so forth. What would happen with atomic weapons was on the front of elites and the masses' minds. And I'm going to come back to that historical moment. So we need to get there. That's the size of the issue that we're talking about. However, there's a real risk if we go there out of fear, out of panic. And that is that we would, in order to have sensible policy, we need to have nuance, we need to have subtlety, we need to have the technocrats in the room drafting, you know, feasible policies that aren't, we can't have too much sort of simplistic, deontological commitments where we say, this is inherently bad and therefore a policy has to be built around this maxim. I don't think that's a productive way forward. So we need to have nuance and sophistication, but we also need to have extreme attention to this issue. And that's one sort of trade-off we're going to have to balance. We don't want publics to be, and they already are fearful. The public already is fearful across, we've surveyed British publics, American publics and other publics. There's a real fear of labor displacement, but also these other risks that we've talked about. So I don't think it will be hard for the public to become really mobilized in fear. And that's, that's something that's, it's also a political force to be harnessed. I'll, sorry, I'll speak more slowly. It's a political force to be harnessed, but also that could get out of control and could make it much more difficult to have productive conversations. So that's, you know, the one risk, but then on the other hand, we ought to be having these conversations much more seriously. Coming back to the question, is there sort of a place where we can draw the red line? I encourage my colleagues who are thinking about the details and nitty gritty of autonomous autonomy and weapon systems to try and articulate what are these mutually dangerous properties of systems that we might be able to verifiably stop. But my broader answer is it's going to be hard. I think developments in AI will look like a slippery slope. And in principle, if we can build AI well, I don't see why there should be any red line. You know, we might think of a red line would be general AI systems or AI systems that can model human behavior better than humans or as well as humans, right? That sounds scary if it can deceive humans. Or systems that are plugged into lots of what are called actuators. That can be, you know, guns, it can be trading bots, anything that touches the world. So we might want to limit the extent to which any AI system is able to rapidly make changes in the world. We might want to limit the intelligence of an AI system so it can't be too intelligent in some domains or at least in a way that a human can't plausibly understand before it deploys it. These are all sensible dimensions that you, we might want to control, at least in the rollout period. But in principle, if we can have good governance institutions, there's no reason we'd want to block that forever because those are, because it's dual use, those also could lead to economic bounty and, you know, health improvements and so forth. Okay, so to the specific question, you know, what would this EU institution that integrates our values and saves the world look like? Yeah, so it's a good question. One thing that will help this EU initiative succeed is if it has technical leadership and authority. So, you know, and this is part of the arms dynamics in that even within governance, in order to get the seat at the table, it really helps to have experts and AI assets. So if you have some, you know, some AI champions, if you have some really good talent, which Europe does, Europe has really good talent that isn't that excited about moving. Some of them move, but a lot will stay in Europe. So cultivating that talent, cultivating domestic AI ecosystem. I also think President Macron understood well something that hasn't been articulated much, which is the importance of trust in being an AI power. That, for example, in the US, if, say, trust in Facebook is undermined, and already it's very low, that could undermine Facebook's business model and it could also undermine Facebook as an AI champion for the US. So developing trust, which benefits from having governments with that perspective and who are working towards achieving that, is an important asset. Okay, some other thoughts. I think the EU, and I'm not sure what the right institution is, but could get practice building good norms in institutions and sort of narrower, easier domains and a reputation for doing that for the common good. So you sort of want to start easy and then scale up. And also, it should do so not just with respect, well, it could do so just with respect to the EU interests. But I think if it's playing the long game and wants to be the center for global cooperation on advanced AI, it should explicitly do that with global interests at heart. So it could say, we are doing this for the global common good. And an advantage that the EU is likely to have in doing so is that it could have like credible transparency that it's actually doing that, that it's actually pursuing conception of the common good, and it's not just rhetoric. And also sufficient transparency that it is, in fact, building AI in a safe way and in a way that's consistent with these other values. So in a way, you might think that's the sort of niche that the EU can tap into, that it can build, it can have a more accountable, democratic, transparent institution for developing advanced AI. And then in so doing, it might attract AI talent, AI resources, could develop a better AI ecosystem, sort of more trusted, you know, like standards like we have with like fair trade or organic. You might have, you know, different kinds of safety or transparency or explainability properties of AI that the EU could certify. And if this goes well, not only is that a good thing, but it can also raise the standards for the US and China and other AI sort of centers to sort of compete on good governance, right? Not just compete on power and compete on performance, but compete on good governance. And this is again this idea that if there's this reservoir of resources that will flow to the site of good governance, which I think there is, then you can turn it into a race to the top. So let me conclude by, you know, we've had a few references to nuclear analogies and I think it's a productive analogy, even though we always have to remember the differences. Another historical moment is after the end of forty-five and forty-six, when there were serious conversations about the international control of atomic weapons. And it's easy to forget that we actually had this moment, especially today when international institutions are, you know, there seems to be this retrenchment away from international cooperation and institutions. So here we were, having just experienced a terrible war and the world really was ready to build world, something like world government. So we went for the UN, you know, Roosevelt really wanted to make this, this sort of global peaceful order and others. And we sort of got halfway there, right? And atomic weapons especially, you know, people were recognized even then that arms control would be very hard. You know, they weren't naive, they sort of lead decision makers, were not naive. But there was sufficient pressure. A lot of that came from the public sphere, but also amongst elites. Nuclear scientists brought the pressure, but also more cooperative, idealistic political elites thought, here's our chance. An atomic arms race is going to be catastrophic and we have an opportunity to stop it. You know, the US and the Soviet Union and Britain were still allies at this moment and could think of themselves as allies. And they thought, how can we do this? This conversation progressed to a pretty extensive level. It was debated in the UN. The US put forward some more or less serious proposals. The Baruch Plan itself was probably pretty cynical, but earlier, what's called the HSN Lilienthal Report and the plan embedded in that was, I think, a pretty serious proposal that from the US perspective would protect US security interests, but would also try to move towards international control of atomic weapons, right? So it involved the US actually giving up its monopoly on atomic weapons. Now, it didn't succeed and there's lots of reasons why it didn't succeed. I think in counterfactual histories, it could have succeeded if, well, I won't say exactly what that sort of counterfactual direction looks like, but I think there's a lot of lessons there. Now, AI is both harder to control, but also we're in a better, we're in an easier position to have international control than we were then. So then, you know, really capitalism and communism were confronting each other and it seemed they were incompatible. So probably control was unlikely to succeed. However, today, there aren't that same level of deep institutional rivalries between, say, the US and China and Europe and other regions. There's much greater compatibility in economic systems, but also in culture. So I think that's our real advantage, that we've come a long way towards having a global culture and sort of cosmopolitanism, cosmopolitanism, and that's our asset. The challenge we're going to face is that AI is harder to separate the dangerous parts from the peaceful economic parts. So in nuclear weapons, it was relatively straightforward to identify these nodes where you could have a monopoly in the production, in the fuel cycle. And also it turns out nuclear energy wasn't that economically useful, though they didn't know it at the time. Whereas AI, and you could verify it unilaterally to a large extent. Whereas AI, and you could verify it unilaterally to a large extent, a lot of the developments. AI doesn't have as much of those properties, so that's going to be, you know, and we've discussed that today, one of the big challenges. But yeah, I think we're geopolitically and culturally, we're in a much better position, and there's a lot of creative possibilities with AI, as I mentioned, and again, we'll return to it. If we could create a supply chain for compute, for computing power, that was verified and built trusted hardware, that was tamper-proof, now there's a lot of technical challenges to that, but in principle, we could, we could at least try to see how far we could get. That could be the foundation for kinds of international control and verification that would be built on top of it. Even if that fails, that could be a useful tool for non-proliferation to non-state hostile actors. So I'll, I guess, summarize by encouraging you all to make this, push this up your priority list. I think we need to think very hard about these issues. There are not easy answers, but in my view, you know, the story of our century will be whether we successfully navigate this governance challenge, and so I think we should be working very hard at it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I really would like to thank all our contributors this morning for the informed and thoughtful speeches that you've made and responses that you've given to the questions. And indeed, to listen and have heard your very serious admonition to us in terms of raising the profile of this. I, yes, I would love to take your optimism about the geopolitical situation we're in currently, three, three, forty-five, forty-six. I think there are also challenges we face as well in that context of the position we're in. But nonetheless, I think the, the informed responses and statements that you've made give us a very solid grounding. So thank you again, and I hope we will live up to the responsibilities you have asked us to take on. Right. And this is the continuation of our Security and Defence Committee meeting, which I think has had a very interesting first half of this morning, and I'm now very much looking forward to the second half that we're about to enter, which is, of course, on the future challenges for the European Union Satellite Centre. And we are having an exchange of views with Pascal Legay, the Director of EU Satzen, and Nicolas Stassen, who is Policy Officer of the Space Task Force Unit, Directorate of Security Policy of the EAS. I would like to very much warmly welcome you both for the, because the Satzen supports European security and defence policy, which is a very important and significant part of the work of the EU. And providing the services based on space assets and collateral data, which is fundamental to the work that you do. Providing decision-makers with early warning of potential crises supports EU action in our security and defence field and enables us to take diplomatic, economic, and humanitarian measures in good time, including with generic planning for intervention. The Director, Legay, I know this is not your first visit to our committee, you last spoke to us in June 2017. In the meantime, there is an ever-growing awareness of the importance of early warning and satellite observation assets for the EU and its foreign and security policy. So we are looking forward very much to hearing from you about the centre, evidently, but its services and its capabilities specifically, your past and present work, and then what you expect to happen in the next twelve to eighteen months, and in general, how the work of EU Satzen fits into EU security and defence policy. So the Commission aims to establish a European initiative, forgive me, that's on the wrong piece. So at that piece, at that point, I would like to say we are looking forward to your contributions and also to let you know that this meeting is, of course, web-streamed as well, so your comments are shared with the wider world, too. Thank you very much. Mr. Legay, please, thank you.
So thank you, Madam Chair, for these kind words and for this introductory speech to give, to give the Satzen and the Director of the Satzen, myself, to say a few words about this EU agency. And first and foremost, I would like to focus on the title of this presentation, so we were going to speak, as you said, about the future challenges for the EU Satellite Centre, but first to start with the current situation before considering the future, at least the near future. And to present the Satzen near future, and to present the Satsen as a unique operational intelligence instrument to support the EU external action in the CFSP, Common Foreign and Security Policy, including security and defence policy. And I would like first to remind you of this organisation, the mission and the governance of the Satellite Centre. So we have this mission defined, approved by the Member States to support the decision-making and actions of the Union in the CFSP/CSDP field. When we speak about actions, we include missions and operations by providing products and services using space assets in general, but in particular satellite data, but also additional sources, aerial imagery for instance, and what we call the collateral data, all those sources to perform our intelligence work. The main features of the Satellite Centre are 24/7 reactivity, it's very important to face the different events in the world, but also a certain autonomy to act, to react in a secure context. So we have two levels concerning the governance of the Satsen, we have two levels, a political level for the political guidance, the PSC, the Political and Security Committee, and minimum once a year the PSC is giving main orientation to the Satsen. And we have also the operational level, the operational direction, Madam Mogherini, our representative, is this operational authority for the Satellite Centre. And the role of the operational authority is to give the Satsen on a daily basis the tasking, the activities of the Satsen basically to face the different situations, I'm going to give you concrete examples right now. Just concerning this part of the governance, to say one word about the users of the Satsen, so the Council, the Secretary General, but also the External Action Service, the main user of the Satellite Centre, and also linked to this external action, the missions and operations, I will also give you some examples. The Member States are using more and more the Satsen to, I would say, to complement the national capacities, but also other possible users, the Commission in some cases as well, what we call the third states, and also the international organisations. Today, the Satsen is used as a political, diplomatic instrument to support the different international organisations, OPCW, OIC for instance. Yes. Just concrete examples, it's not an exhaustive list, but to say again that we cover different operations, missions of the EU. If I speak about Sofia for instance, but also about EU MM Georgia are two concrete examples of what we do today, regional conflicts, crisis, and speaking about Ukraine and Syria for instance, it probably rings a bell to you, piracy, trafficking. The migration issue is also one of the key activities of the Satsen today, it is a strong political concern, but also proliferation of weapons of mass destruction. Also, nice countries, if I mention Iran or North Korea, also are relatively active in this context, but also different disasters, human-made or natural disasters. I didn't mention the fact that the EU Satellite Centre is a purely civilian agency, but you are covering, I would say, dual activities. So at the end is to implement, contribute to implement the EU global strategy for foreign and security policy. A couple of examples of what we do, it is an example concerning the support to OIC, the SMM, the Special Monitoring Mission, and we are monitoring the good implementation of the Minsk Agreement, and you have on the screen an example of the fact that in some cases the terms of the agreements are not implemented properly, and we, in this case, we identified the vehicles in the forbidden area. Another example is this one, concerning the situation in Syria, and for instance, we follow the deployment of Russian military forces, this is an example of Latakia, and the fact that we have heavy deployment of Russian aircrafts, helicopters, the fact that they also develop the infrastructure, a new taxiway, a new air defence system, new buildings, and also many military means present on the site. Another case, as I said, migration is a big concern for the EU in particular, and the fact that we also follow the situation, I would say, on a daily basis, and you have an example, this is the Turkish coast in this example, the fact that it's possible to monitor different locations of interest and to have an idea of the activities at these different locations, the fact that it's possible to identify some indicators, to have some elements to know this activity about migration, in this case the fact that the migrants are using rubber boats to go to sea, and it's possible to follow, for instance, the different temporary comps used by the migrants, also the rubber boats we can identify on the pictures, and also ones that are at sea, also to have an idea of this activity. Another example is this one concerning proliferation of weapons of mass destruction, this is an example over North Korea, and this is a submarine with a nuclear capacity, and it's also to describe in this case the activities at the place, the different means deployed, and to identify as well the different components of this nuclear activity. Another concrete example, it's more linked to the humanitarian situation, it is an example in Bangladesh, and also the purpose of this work is to estimate, to assess the situation, the different installations, organisations on the field, activities, infrastructures for instance, the lines of communication, water supply, shelters, dwelling etc., to have the exact, as exact as possible, idea of the situation on the field. And the last concrete example I would like to show you this morning is this cultural heritage. So it's, at the beginning it was not a natural domain of activity of the Satellite Centre, but finally, the fact that there is in Iraq, Syria, in the case of this picture, it's in Iraq, Mosul area, and we follow also, first to identify the debris, because Daesh is using these pieces of cultural heritage to finance terrorism activities, and it's to have a better idea of the situation and the moves of these different pieces. So it's important to have also pictures of the monuments before and after their destruction, and to have also, to follow the trafficking of different pieces. So about the Satsen, after concrete examples and before concluding my short introductory presentation, to give you some concrete figures about the Satsen activities. The fact that over the past eight, 10 years, we noticed a big increase of the Satsen activity to meet the exponentially evolving needs of the different Satsen users, and for instance, since 2013, we have been multiplying the number of products by a factor of three. From 700 products 2010, we reached 2017 2,200 products, and also the fact that in this case, we present the downloading of the production of the Satsen by the Member States, and there is also, sorry, multiplied by 24 the downloading, so the use, concrete use of the production of the Satsen by the Member States in this example. Also to mention the fact that a couple of years ago, we had the necessity to be reactive, and 30% of the production was delivered in less than 24 hours. Now in 2017, we have this obligation to be more and more reactive, and more than 75% of the total production is delivered in less of 24 hours once the data are acquired. Another important aspect of the Satsen activity, it's about cooperation. So we have in all the key official documents this mandatory action to cooperate with different actors and to develop according to the official text to improve synergies and non-duplications of activities and means, and the Satsen is fully in line with this key political orientation and to make it a reality, and also to provide useful services to EU external action, but also basically to the citizens, EU citizens, to operational actors as well, and if you permit me to say that, to show the taxpayers, the voters, that the upstream decisions of major EU activities lead to concrete applications. This is a fundamental aspect, and we are also again fully committed to do so. The fact that in the council decision, the governance document of the Satellite Centre, we have also this part of the mission to cooperate, so with the Commission, with other Union agencies for instance, with the Member States, also with non-EU actors, if you wish, so we can elaborate later on on that. And the fact also for, in the recent space regulation, the proposal from the Commission to the Parliament and the Council, it's also underlined that Satsen will be maximising synergies and complementarities with other Union activities, and especially the programme on its, the space programme and its components. The fact that today we have agreements with different actors, you have some examples with the EDA of course, with Frontex, we support the border control activity of Frontex, providing also a concrete support, with the Member States as well, we are fully committed, with ESA, European Space Agency, we have also an agreement with them. And more specifically, I would like to emphasise one specific cooperation with Copernicus. And as you know, Copernicus, this Earth observation programme has six main components: land, maritime, atmosphere, climate, emergency and security. The Satsen is today involved in security activity of Copernicus, so it's funding coming from the Commission, Budget Commission, and we have a delegation agreement to perform this specific activity. In the space regulation, there is also a consideration about the future of this space programme of the EU and the role of the space programme agency, EU Agency for Space Programme. The fact that for the Satellite Centre to face this increasing and permanent demand, to be in a position to deliver pertinent services, this cooperation with the Commission about Copernicus is absolutely essential, and we must be present in the evolution of Copernicus security. So I underline this point with dynamism, I would say, because it's fundamental. I hope that we will be present again in this evolution in the future. The fact that the Satsen is dealing with the security activities, we are, Satsen is a concealed entity, so intergovernmental entity, we are the Member States' representative. We have today the 26-year experience in this operational context to handle in some cases sensitive or classified data. We are operational, 24/7 reactive, and we have a direct interface with the end-users, so we are, there is no other entity with such characteristics to be useful and pertinent in Copernicus security evolution. To complete and to conclude this, I would like to just to, you have an example of the two-day products we are delivering in the context of Copernicus, the current portfolio. So you have the nine initial products, reference maps, road network status, conflict damage assessments, evacuation of citizens, EU border maps etc. So we are working at the moment about the evolution of this portfolio, and we need the users' feedback also to develop these services through Copernicus, and probably with the more sensitive products in the future, the fact that to add some illegal activities also products in the future. So we need this interaction with the end-users to develop this Copernicus support service. And the last two slides are this one. The fact that the Satsen is fundamentally a geospatial entity, geospatial that means geography and space, to combine both. The fact that there is a fantastic evolution of the geospatial business, and we have more and more constellations of satellites orbiting, delivering different types of data with different qualities. The fact that we must stick to this evolution, we speak about, in all good conferences, we speak all the time about big data, so we have to face this huge amount of data coming, and we have to automate, to have more automatic capacities to ingest and to use this data, and to provide new services, and the idea of the Satellite Centre is an important one. The fact that we suggest, this is an ongoing discussion at the moment with my colleagues of the External Action Service, but also with the Member States, with the different industrial partners, with the Commission of course, with the Commission, to put in place an interactive platform to propose to the users, if I may to say so, self-service capacity, for them to have access to this platform with data, with products, with the processing tools, and for them to compose their menu of their need, to be more automatic and more interactive. This is our ambition in the near future. And finally, this last slide to conclude, the fact, very important to say that at national level, intelligence is a vital capacity, at EU level it is even more crucial, crucial to lead the external action to face the different situations I mentioned, migration, terrorism, some aspects of the hybrid threats, the regional crisis, proliferation, natural disaster etc. It's very important to be reactive, reliable, relevant, to meet these different needs, and to this end, I mentioned the fact that it's absolutely essential to cooperate with relevant and competent other entities. Also the fact that the EU, I don't speak about national means, but about the EU means, today in the intelligence context, we don't have so many intelligence capacities, but again, to take good decisions and to support properly the different actions, we need a minimum of intelligence capacity at EU level. So we are today discussing, because every day, every day, sorry, every day as well, but every year, we have to discuss the resources of the Satellite Centres, we have this discussion with the Member States as concealed entity, and if I may to say, not in a diplomatic way, the fact that every year we are discussing and sometimes fighting for a few thousands of euro, and when I compare this low-level discussion with the ambition of the NFF 2127, the multi-annual financial framework, we speak about billion euros for security and defence, I took the figures, we speak about 27.5 billion euros for the seven-year period, including the 13 billion euros for the Defence Fund. We mentioned the migration and border management, 34.9 billion euros, this is a proposal from the Commission, and we speak also outside the ceiling of this NFF, the Peace Facility for operations and missions in particular, 10.5 billion euros. and missions in particular, ten-point-five billion euros. Again, there is an imbalance between the resources of the existing modest EU intelligence capacities and the general picture. We must consider this good balance between the different means if we want to be consistent in the future. And to add the last point is the Brexit effect, the Brexit impact. For the Satzen, it's not neutral at all. Today, UK is the second contributor to the Satzen budget. So we are carefully considering the situation if deal or no deal in the near future. If there is no deal, that means for us a big lack of resources and with a strong reduction of capacities of the Satellite Center. So just the last, the final word, saying that if we consider the cumulative effect of Brexit and the limited presence of the Satzen in Copernicus program in the future, the future of the Satzen will be strongly impacted. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Obviously, that last point is one that's very close to my heart as well, but we'll undoubtedly come back to that. Before move to the point of interventions from members, I would now like to give the floor to Mr. Stassen, who is Policy Officer of the Space Task Force Unit, Directorate Security Policy in the EAS. Please, Mr. Stassen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And on behalf of the acting Special Envoy for Space, Mrs. Karin Kleis, let me thank you for your invitation to this exchange of views about the Satellite Center, which is also a priority for us, as the Director also explained quite extensively. We'd like to recall that the EU Satellite Center is a legacy of the Western European Union. It has started its activities of analyzing Earth observation images already in nineteen ninety-two. And since its inception, the agency has been permanently involved in the intelligence and operational support of the WEU external action and since two thousand and one of the EU external action. It's a unique instrument in its kind, able to address accurately highly sensitive intelligence requirements with recourse to commercial but also highly classified Earth observation resources from member states. This requires the ability to remain at the cutting edge of technology with highly skilled and motivated personnel. As addressed by the Satzen Director, the Satzen is an intergovernmental agency. The governance is in the hands of the member states via, as he explained, the Political and Security Committee and the Board. The operational direction is a responsibility of the High Representative. The HR chairs also the Board of the Agency. To fulfill this demanding task, a delegation has been given to the EAS Space Task Force, which I belong to. To address the many challenges faced by the EU, the legal basis has been regularly updated for the Satzen in two thousand and one, two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fourteen. The aim was to maintain the instrument in adequation with the EU ambitions, to support the decision-making and actions of the Union in the CFSP and CSDP in particular, by providing geospatial intelligence products and now more and more services. It has to be stressed that Satzen is a living example of pooling and sharing, where all member state financial contributions are pooled with the sharing of the whole production to each of them. But today, the Satzen is at a new crossroad of its existence. On the one hand, and from an EAS perspective, there is a need to dispose of an instrument able to respond, to respond to the challenges addressed in the global strategy, such as terrorism, hybrid threats, border protection, to name a few. Satzen offers capabilities to contribute effectively to the EU strategic autonomy. These capabilities have been reinforced with the delegation to Satzen of the Copernicus Security Service from the Commission, more in particular, the support to external action, but also with agreements concluded with EMA and Frontex. On the other hand, the battlefield is now fully digitized. Reaction times have shortened to hours, if not minutes. It is not anymore the availability of images which is key to the ability to process, but the ability to process and extract relevant information and the ability to disseminate the intelligence timely and securely to the requestor. We are shifting from the provision of products to a continuous flow of information. In addition, the uptake by the EU Mission and Operations has revealed to be low. Currently, Satzen is not only facing operational and technological challenges but also resources issues to support its activities. Member state contributions have remained flat for many years with a slight but insufficient increase this last year. Cost recovered from contributions to third parties, although substantial, do not allow for financial stability. However, the Commission has declared its intention to contribute more and starting from the next MFF. Finally, as also explained by the Director, the Brexit issue poses a risk for a severe cut in the budget and in the personnel. To address these challenges, the High Representative in the role of Operational Direction of the Satzen proposed to the Board end two thousand and seventeen to launch a global reflection on the future of the agency with a view to address the future of Satzen on the long term while ensuring the necessary resources. The exercise was concluded successfully end of June two thousand and eighteen. Now, a plan with options, with financial implications, shall be presented to the member states by end of June two thousand and nineteen. About eighteen conclusions, recommendations were agreed. To note among them, Satzen is instrumental to the EU decision-making for CSFP, CSDP, that the core task of Satzen is actionable geospatial intelligence, that Satzen has to be further integrated in the intelligence communities, to improve Satzen implications in the EU missions and operations, to allow Satzen to have access to both commercial and governmental Earth observation assets, to maintain Satzen at the cutting edge of technology, to improve secure communication for dissemination and maximize synergies with Commission, union agencies, bodies or member states, but in particular, as the Director mentioned, the Copernicus program. The Satzen and the EAS Space Task Force are now fully committed to develop this plan and to start very soon discussions with all the stakeholders. To conclude, in a nutshell, Satzen is a unique intelligence instrument for supporting the CFSP, CSDP. Important challenges lie ahead, they are of operational, technological and financial nature. The EAS, Space Task Force and the Satzen, and upon mandate of the Board, are now actively working on shaping a sustainable future for the agency. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to both of you for your contributions and enlightening situation. So I do have a number of questions, you may or may not be glad to know, one of which is actually asking you to elaborate on the kind of the headline issue, which I guess is the budget, because of the, as you've both highlighted, there's an increasing need for the work that you do and a, an uncertain environment at this point, particularly in light of Brexit, in which your, your resource base is there for it. So I would, I would like to ask very directly what you think of the, what is in the proposed MFF and what you think maybe are, you know, sort of other means of financing as well, but how you see the budget going forward and what, if you have a specific ask of us as members of the European Parliament. I am also looking at this, you talked as well about EU citizens and the, their access to this, I was interested in that point and what you actually, if you could elaborate a little more on that, about how you see that developing with the engagement with EU citizens. I would also say as well, and this is a point that I repeatedly come back to, but it is also one about communication, recognizing the challenging budget system, but we always need to win the argument with our citizens as to why various agencies exist, why what's going on goes on. And I think that element of communication, what you were talking about in terms of what you actually do and the vital service that you provide, for example, in the OPCW context or what other, whatever other examples in the, you know, in dealing with terrorism, do you have a communication strategy more broadly? And again, you touched on your relationship, that you have a relationship with ESA, and I'd be interested for you to elaborate that and indeed on, you know, the Satzen's kind of interconnectedness in the wider global kind of space context. And finally, I will come to Brexit, stating very clearly upfront, and it's not finally, actually, I do have another one, that I, you may be able to tell that I am British, but I am a British person who thinks that Brexit is an incredibly bad idea for my country. But, you know, how would you want to see the future relationship of the UK to, with regards to you Satzen, in whatever form, you know, we get to in the future, if some of us don't manage to stop this really bad idea? And my concluding question, just to keep you busy, is, you know, we had first thing this morning, a very interesting hearing on AI. And I note, Mr. Stassen, your point about moving from downloads to continuous feed, and I wondered, in the context of the evolution of the work of Satzen, if there is an AI element that, you know, would be involved as well. Pick out of that gallimorphy of questions what you choose.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the very pertinent questions, if I may. And the fact that, so to start saying that the most important budget-wise, it was your first question, is not to say we want more money, everybody is, can say that easily, the most important question, to do what with this possibly additional resources? Again, the Satzen is, is need-oriented, if I may, users-oriented, and we have to face the increasing demand. And to, again, to be reactive, to be relevant. And to this, to this end, we, we need to consider different possibilities. And what I will suggest very soon, because there is soon a board meeting with the twenty-eight member states mid-October, to present my views about the evolution of the Satzen business for next year. This is a very near future. And my proposal is to base this evolution on the technology solutions. The fact that I said we need to use artificial intelligence, linked to your last question, to have more automation in the business of the Satzen. My idea as Director is not to multiply the number of personnel and new staff members by, but to have more automatic processes and to put in place the proper technology solution. I said that the main idea of the Satzen today is to have this secure platform to give access to different users, authorized users, when it's a bit sensitive or classified. And we need for that to, not only to have the infrastructure, but also to feed this platform with different partners. And I said that there is a big evolution of constellations of data in the commercial world. Also, we have, as my colleague Nicola said, the fact that we have also member states, they made proposals to have access to the national systems. These systems are in general classified. And to have, we have also the Copernicus satellites, the Sentinel satellites, and the idea would be to collect the different data, to have specific contracts with the commercial providers, and there is a cost for that, and to feed in a permanent way this platform with updated data, with updated products and with also processing tools. And we have to develop these processing tools using artificial intelligence, for instance, and there is a cost. The fundamental years behind, the added value for the users, the end users, would be to have an easy access if there is a crisis during the weekend, if there is a disaster, to be in a position to go to this platform and to use, to build themselves the different data products they need to face the situation. This is the main solution, the technology, technology approach for that. Of course, we need to accompany this evolution, technology evolution, also with the necessary skills and with the personnel, with the necessary competencies. It's not easy also to recruit the necessary personnel. We have to be attractive and to offer the conditions to attract the necessary qualified people. It is another part of that. Also concerning resources-wise, I mentioned strongly the Copernicus evolution. In the MFF, we speak about, there is also the budget line linked to the space activities is sixteen billion euros for the seven-year period. The fact that Copernicus is about five billion in the proposal from the Commission to develop the security service. Again, what I didn't explicitly mention, the fact that the annual income of the Satzen is around twenty-six billion, billion, sorry, million, not my secret ambition for the Satzen, but twenty-six.
It's out now.
Million euro a year. And we have more or less fifty percent coming from the direct contribution of the member states and the other fifty percent are coming from the EU budget, from the Commission, basically, for Copernicus. And this connection with Copernicus is fundamental to develop capacities, services for the future. So this is, if you ask me how many, how many million euros you want more, I can say that we want technology and Copernicus are fundamental elements for that, concretely speaking. Artificial intelligence to complete on that topic, the fact that we have access to an increasingly, increasing amount of data and we have not human resources, we have not the technical capacities to ingest this huge amount of data, but nevertheless, a huge amount of data is an opportunity because with artificial intelligence, we can process this huge amount of data. And if we have more and more data, it's very good and beneficial for artificial intelligence because it's possible to develop models, tools, using this huge quantity of data and to have robust solution at the end because we have a huge amount of data. And we started in the Satzen to develop specific tools with artificial intelligence to have automatic detection of objects. And it's very useful, again, to have a more automation for the analyst of the Satellite EU citizens also, I said, the taxpayers, the voters, in May two thousand and nineteen would go to express their opinion about the EU interest and the future. It is an important issue. And all of us, we have this obligation to show that we are doing a useful business and not to spoil resources, but to use in the best possible way these resources. Today, the member states Today, the member states, who are more institutional users from the member states, are more and more using the Satzen services. Why? As you said, there is a communication strategy. Because we spend a huge energy to contact all the existing users, but also the potential users, to use the satellite center services. And we have room for improvement in this field. So we organize regularly meetings, visits to the satellite center and the Subcommittee for Security and Defense will visit the Satzen in the future. We organize workshops very soon, for instance, for Copernicus services. We have a big workshop in Paris in December, the eleventh of December. And we invite many users or potential users to present our views about the evolution of the services and concretely to meet their needs, their concerns, and to develop these capacities. So communication strategy for us is to investigate. So yesterday, for instance, I was invited to go to FCA. This is another EU Commission agency, for Fish Risk Control Agency, also to speak about potential common activities in the future. We have also contact with other EU agencies to see the possible synergies. We go to the different capitals regularly to meet the different member states representatives, also to take into account their views and needs for the future. I don't know if I covered more or less the different topics you mentioned. And again, the space context is a fantastically evolving context with more and more opportunities. And a very important actor as well is the industry, European industry first, to, because innovation and development are coming from there, from the industry. And it's of a big interest to have this close contact with the industry partners, the startups, because they are also, they have very good solutions to use this huge amount of data. And it's possible to have a very good benefit from them. And the last point, the fact that at this very moment in the satellite center, we have, we organized what we call Industry Days. We invited different companies. We invited the users from the member states, institutional actors, other EU agencies to have a big exchange of views, to examine the solutions from the industry partners and also to express our needs for the future. This is the part of the communication strategy of the satellite center.
Thank you very much. And thank you for taking, swallowing so many questions and then coming back with responses. Mr. Stassen, please.
Well, thank you to Pascal for already the extensive answers. Touching about the first question about the budget. It's true that it's a difficult exercise. It was a difficult exercise year after year with nearly a flat budget. As I said, with the international situation, also the advent of all the terrorist threat, there was a slight increase last year and we hope it to continue from the member states, although it will not cover, I would say, the huge amount of needs the Satzen has to face. So with the current exercise, we will now have a specific review of all the possibilities. Of course, see among the member states what they are ready to contribute. Also review the, what we call the cost recovery mechanism, is to the payback to the third parties. Does it work well? Can we have a kind of more way to foresee the income and stability? See if there are possibility within the CSFP budget. Not also to see among the member state contribution in kind. When I was touching about access to governmental system, there could be maybe some opportunities to, we say, receive data free of charge. And as Pascal said, the cooperation with the Commission, which is now, there is already a cooperation on the Copernicus project and also on the space surveillance and tracking. And of course, there have been proposals made by the Commissions to augment this contribution. And so we will certainly explore, I would say, this interesting option, which is in our view for the moment the most important one. Okay, but as I said, this year will be very important to aggregate all the information and finally to present to the member states, I would say, several options, a high hand, a low hand, an intermediate one, and see what will be the appetite and the political will to decide and where to go. About the EU citizens, I would like to repeat that Satzen is really a success story for pooling and sharing when every member state with modest contribution receives in return a huge amount of the production with also the ability to question the Satzen about national concerns, of course, in the security field. So, and demand has even been increasing. So as I said, the payback for the member states is obvious. Maybe we should communicate a bit better, more clearly upon that. But from the EAS point of view, of course, Satzen is an important instrument for the implementation of the global strategy. And maybe we should put more emphasis on the importance of this instrument. About the Brexit, of course, it's an issue. As I said, it's an, Satzen is also an intelligence agency. It will say, this means that from March 2019, people will lose their security clearance. There will be a personal issue. Important also, financial impact. Legally speaking, for the moment, Satzen could only be what we call a third state in the, according to the Council decision. But I will not go any further, only saying that we are following for the moment the guidelines of the Task Force Fifty on this issue. You touched with your last question, a very important issue about artificial intelligence. And as we said, we need to cope with the flow of requests and information to be near real-time capable, give the ability to the users to access in a timely manner the information. And of course, the machine learning, artificial intelligence will come into the play. It's a challenge also for us, for the High Representative, because she has the operational direction of the activities. And one of the main activities, what we call the tasking authority. So every tasking coming to the center is first screened by the tasking authority at the Space Task Force. Of course, what we look is that first, if the request is in accordance with CFSP, CSDP concern, if there is no impact on the member states, for instance, if we are looking to EU borders. This includes also the Copernicus support to external action. And of course, we need also to cope with the resources, so we give a level of priority to the Union. So all these steps will have to be implemented in one way or another into this platform to enable, I would say, to have this kind of control, maybe with authentication of the user, pre-certification. So it's really a challenge for us to review this tasking procedure. And also with the, having in mind that it should not be, it shouldn't slow down the process and avoid absolutely that the information finally delivered arrives too late and will be obsolete to the user. So this will be a huge challenge for us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you both very much for being here. It is genuinely appreciated. And also for highlighting the importance of the work that Satzen does to, in particular, actually, as we've said, our citizens. Ultimately, that's all of our purposes. And your work indirectly and directly is safeguarding them and needs to be built on for the future. So again, my deep thanks for you for coming here today. And that concludes this morning's business for the committee. So we will convene again at two thirty this afternoon. Thank you very much.